Make a presentation. To make a presentation in regard to a proposal for an updated library. The Library Board of Trustees engaged an architect about three years ago and have been working with that architect to develop the plan that we will present this evening. LARQ functions as basically a pass-through agency that gets us from the board and brings it before council for presentations and potentially to get on referendum. So that is the reason for the evening's presentation is to inform council and the public of the project and to get some feedback from council as well. We'll make a more detailed presentation in the future, probably after the budget season is complete in order in hopes of getting on referendum for November of 2025. I will now turn this over to Board of Trustee members Christopher Riley and Leanne Manke and LARQ members as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
All right, so thank you, Mayor, Town Manager, esteemed council members and members of the public. My name is Christopher Riley. I'm the Vice President on the Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board of Trustees as well as a member of LARQ.
And I'm Leanne Wetherle-Manke. I've been a Lucy Robbins Wells Library Board Member since 2005. I currently serve as the Treasurer and I've been a Library Editions and Renovations Committee Member since its inception in 2015. I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight.
The first question a lot of people may ask is who still uses the library? Everything you can access online, why do you still need the library? Well, as it turns out. So page catches up.
Yep, we need a page.
There you go. As it turns out, quite a few people use the library. Just in the past year, there was over a quarter million materials that were circulated out of the library. Another thing is over the past year, there were eight hundred programs held by the library that had over thirty-two thousand attendees. Just to put that in perspective, in 2024, the population of Newington was just over thirty-two thousand. So as you can see, we've been a very important part of the community. In addition to that, there's been about eight hundred and thirteen. There's been a hundred and sorry, I'm trying to read my paper here. A hundred and thirteen summer programs for that support that were offered to about six thousand residents of the town. One of the other things too is that, as we know, meeting space can be a premium. So when you're trying to conduct business around town or you're remote working or even studying for college classes, the meeting rooms here at the library were used over three thousand times themselves. Leanne?
Well, and in addition to the standard available services usually associated with libraries, Lucy provides an even broader spectrum of services and programs to the community, including but not limited to our senior outreach. We actually source and deliver to seniors in their homes and in facilities. We provide preschool programs. We provide cultural programming throughout the year and we collaborate with the Board of Education on a number of things, including our Sleeve Young People Series where we bring an author into the third and fourth grade levels at each elementary school on an annual basis. If we had more space, we'd do more programs.
So how long has the library been in their recent trying to get a library renovation? Well, we've been doing performing studies since 2015 while still trying to maintain our mission of providing information, education and cultural enrichment to the town of Newington and with through our excellent resources that the library already has. We've been having studies since 2015. There was a description and assessment of space needs study in 2015. In 2017, there was a study done where we incorporated about twelve hundred responses back from town residents about what they would like to see in the future library. We kind of took that as a key for doing this latest concept design by having a suggestion box currently right now located at the checkout counter at the library. And we've been reading through those suggestions and trying to include those as we're looking at the design. Another aspect too is that the the town of Newington is continues to grow. In 2023 alone, there was a thousand new homes that were approved. In addition to that, a lot of those homes are already being moved into and people are are moving into the town. So we're looking to not only be able to serve our current community, but our growing population as well. So a lot of people may go into the library and when they're checking out books and they're like, well, what's the problem? Why? Why do you need to renovate? Why do you need to change the library? Well, over the past, over the years, we've encountered a lot of challenges. I would like to say that we've in past years, we've had, you know, leaks in the roof and atrium and that. And a lot of those have already been addressed by the town, the town facilities department. In fact, they've worked, they've had in the past year about two hundred and fifty work orders just for the library alone. And that kind of indicates to you kind of the scope of the constant maintenance that the aging building currently has to has to endure, which is why one of the reasons we're looking for a reimagined library. Leanne?
The town facilities department, they do an incredible job addressing the library's never-ending building and infrastructure challenges, as do our library staff because they have to work around all these issues. Our current challenge of the month is the picture with the sign that says thank you on it. We have a temperature control and mold remediation issue. The challenges of the HVAC system, which was inadequately originally designed, a lack of dehumidification system. It's a domino effect with poor circulation, humidity and other issues which have resulted in mold and stacks in the biography section. And facilities again to the rescue, correction and remediation, more time and money. We are temporarily losing a study room because we have to move that collection into the study room, which is a loss because we only have a few study rooms and they're always in demand. We have the remediation and cleaning of the books and the stacks. There's the loss of the future future storage because some of the shelving can't be used now because of humidity issues. As well as the potential collection items that are lost because they just can't be salvaged. This is the kind of thing that's been going on for years. I've worked in the mechanical electrical industry for decades and twenty years ago, my company was called in to look at the temperature control. And again, there were no fixes, there were only Band-Aids and we continue to go forward with that. And that's just an example of one of the items that continually happen.
Another challenge that we have is the limited ability to expand wiring for technology. When the expansion occurred in nineteen eighty-eight, there was no way to know about the explosion that would come out if internet and wifi and all the devices that would be coming out. So it was built just as libraries had traditionally been built and not being able to support all this future. Leanne, if you want to talk a little bit about this.
If you look, there's the bundle of wires there, which actually looks pretty good in this picture. We've actually had years where it's been wrapped and sheathed in plastic because there was a water leak directly above it. One of the things that the nineteen eighty-eight edition did was we had that beautiful brick aesthetic that we were matching. Well, that provides a huge roadblock to adapting and infrastructure and for technology and accessibility.
Another issue is I'm sure a lot of you are aware is parking. Parking always seems to be an issue for patrons. Right now, the library only has about twenty-seven dedicated spots currently. In fact, the lot that that's there right now was a temporary lot put in during the town hall renovation. So at the time, it wasn't configured for the best use of the space for parking. With the reimagined library, as Leanne had alluded to before, the mechanical infrastructure right now, we're just being able to Band-Aid it and everything. But the plan is to be able to meld the old and the new library together so that it works, it works more harmoniously. There's also the planned adaptability in the technology so that, you know, decades down the road, we can, we can support, you know, what may be coming. I mean, as I said, we can't foresee, but we can at least get it ready so that, you know, at any time someone can easily update. And the plans for the parking, they were planned to increase to about seventy-five spots, which is quite a bit of an increase from there. Storage. Storage is a big challenge at the at the library. Things are stored in hallways, under desks, closets. In in addition to just, you know, paper and just resource storage, there's also the, I'll say the human resource storage part of it. A lot of times the staffing in the past has had to share desks and move, you know, when someone else has to use, use, use a desk while they're, you know, while they're in there. So there have been improvements over the years on that and everything, but there's still, as I said, a lack of, lack of for that. Leanne, you want to tell them about the shed?
Well, the shed, the shed is the friends' home. They live in the shed. And actually, that's an improvement over the basement, I guess. You've heard us all talk about the three-legged stool, the support of the library. There's the town, there is the Board of Trustees, and then there is the friends. The friends are an integral part of the success of the library. The friends and the board are all hundred percent volunteers. And the friends fund ninety percent of our programs in-house, museum passes, events. They just wouldn't happen without the friends' efforts. And their fundraising efforts are driven by their winter fest and by their book sales. I'll give you an example of the life cycle of a donated item that is going to be for sale, the book. Comes into the lobby into the bin. Some lucky volunteer gets to bring it down to the basement and clean it and review it and prep it for sale. It comes back upstairs, then it goes out to the shed where it's sorted and cataloged. And then it's transported across the street to the senior center where it's then sorted again for display and sale. And at the end of the sale, if it hasn't been sold, it's donated, recycled or returned to the shed. And that happens thousands of times for every book sale, all with a lot of work and dedication by our volunteers. The friends need to come inside and have a dedicated space.
Another current challenge that we have is limited space for our events and programs that the library has. Anyone who has attended a Hanover concert or Winterfest knows how packed to capacity a lot, a lot of those events are. Leanne, you want to tell them a little bit about the behind the scenes?
Behind the scenes, it's always an effort. The Winterfest, for example, which a lot of you helped us with, you came in, you volunteered, set up, worked the event, helped us clear up, and we greatly appreciate it. And you know how much work goes into that. For a program that was basically setting up a small stage and accommodating two hundred and fifty attendees, we have to close the library early because we have to reconfigure the the facility. The stacks configuration and the heavy bookcases, and they are heavy to move. They don't just roll around. All that has to be moved around and set up. And then have your event, work the event, and then after the event, you have to put it all back together so you can be back in business for the next morning. It's a lot of work and it, it requires a lot of volunteer labor plus our staff. Our staff is incredible, but we need the volunteers to do it as well.
Another thing about regarding programs is the, like the community room is one of the rooms they can use, but it's only got the sixty percent capacity. And when it's used after hours, you have to have library staff on hand because it's inside the library. With the reimagined library, we plan to create more open and flexible spaces so that you're surrounded by the collection, but you're, you got a lot more room to fit all these people for these events. For the programs, you don't have to necessarily cap it at the capacity that we have now. You'd be able to expand and have more people be able to join programs. And each room can serve multiple purposes, just, you know, depending on what program or event is happening that time. Another challenge that we have is anyone with a with children that knows about the children's area upstairs. Going up, you know, if you got to go up the stairs or in the elevator with the strollers. And then the play areas that you have up there is really a very small play area. There's, there's, there's only room for maybe two or three families because we also have to have room for the children's and children's collection of books up there as well. Downstairs, we also have an insufficiently sized teen area or rather alcove. It's really just, you know, bookshelves along, you know, three walls and a couple of tables and chairs. And it's kind of a dark corner that I don't know that, you know, many teenagers, if they want to go to the library, are going to find out a welcoming place to hang out. With the reimagined library, the plan is to expand the areas for the children's area and the, in the teen area.
And just to show you, the Board of Trustees and the staff and all of our consultants have worked very hard to research and plan these proposed spaces to address the issues, what works and what doesn't. And the children's area is a perfect example of that. The nineteen sixties children's annex, and I know a lot of you weren't even around for that, but it was toward the front of the building, toward town hall side. It was taken off and then the nineteen, in the nineteen eighty-eight renovation, they put the children upstairs for safety and security. Great, great thinking. We're going to keep the kids safe. However, now run a program with twenty-five toddlers, twenty-five strollers and one elevator. Or have a program down the hallway. Everyone is very excited to run down that hallway. And what do they do? They thunder over the quiet reading area down below. So our thought here is we're thinking of what should be in the proposed plan is keep the children on the ground floor, keep them in the back, removed, separate and safe, but no elevator. And also, we are proposing an outside area. One of the things that when we acquired the two lots next to the library, we had butterfly gardens and all sorts of programs outside. And then when the temporary parking lot was required for the town hall, that went away. We'd like to bring that back.
So what are some of the objectives of the reimagined library? We want to provide a space that supports lifelong learning. It will enrich, educate, entertain and expand people's understanding of the community that's around them. We also want to be a welcoming, comfortable and safe destination for everyone in the community. Also being able to provide flexibility to, to grow creativity within the town and be able to provide a variety of programs for the interests of today as well as for tomorrow. We want to make sure that, you know, we continue to preserve our history while we embrace the present and but planning for the future.
One of the things that Lucy has right now in a very limited extent, but is in great demand, is the Library of Things, which is a collection of non-traditional items that are they supplement the traditional books, DVDs, audio CDs, audiobooks and periodicals, reference materials. The library things that we currently have include but are not limited to things like lawn games, tablets with wifi hotspots, assistive technology devices and ukuleles. The demand for this is only growing, but we are constrained by space. These are items that take up space and we don't have that.
And in addition, more features of the reimagined library, as I mentioned before, was a larger community room with external access and its own, possibly its own restrooms as well, so that it can be really used after hours. No library staff required because it's all external access at that point. Having an up-to-date computer commons with the updated technology infrastructure so that you'd have wifi both throughout the building as well as outside. One of the other things too is we want to become a creative touchstone for the community. Because right now, if you, if you know about the local artists, they do display month by month within the community room. But if there's a program going on in the community room, you can't, can't go in and view it. If there's not a program going on, you have to go to the front desk usually because the door is left locked. And I'd like to be able to bring that art throughout the library. So with the exterior of the, the building, the reimagined library will maximize the library's use of the site. As you can see from the picture there, the entrance in this conceptual design is, would be facing Garfield Street versus Mazacolli Way as it is currently. The plan is to expand the utility and impact of the library. So you'd have more space for for outdoor seating and with the wifi available outside, if it's a sunny day, you can go sit and with your laptop and go, go work just outside the library if you want to. Also plan for library or community related events such as the book festivals, farmer's market or the annual library five K road race, which by the way, this year is on Sunday, May eighteenth. You know, it's a large fundraiser for the library, one of our largest fundraisers for the library. Registration is now open. So if anyone wants to join. Once again, I'll touch on the fact that parking, we would be more doubling the parking spaces to seventy-five spaces. And we would want to become a community destination, not only for our residents, but for the communities that are beyond us. We're close proximity to the bus stop that's across Cedar Street at the senior center. And as well as expanding the outside area would allow for more bicyclists to be able to park their bikes there as well.
One of the things that we were reviewing, like I said, we're, we're trying to always learn from our mistakes, what works, what doesn't. The outside and exterior community gathering area would be an integral part of the future library. We're always striving to determine how we can better serve the needs of the community. For example, during COVID, we were reminded how many of our patrons rely on library for wifi service. We did not realize the extent of that. And what we found was we were limited, very much lacking in what we were able to provide. By bringing the service, the technology inside and out, we would be providing a greater public usage. And this is just some of the things that we're trying to address.
So as we were talking before about with the maintenance of the library, you want to be able to reduce that and sustainability becomes a key factor of the conceptual design. Also just making sure that, you know, we're friendly to the environment as well. Some of the features that we were thinking of were with the solar panels as we have on other buildings within town. And if you saw in the previous picture with the exterior improvements, there was a lot of, a lot of windows, so letting a lot more natural light into the building versus having to heavily rely on, on electricity there. One of the other key aspects too is that there are sustainability grants available that would be, be something that we would look into for, for applying for funding for the library. So now we're moving inside. Inside the library, we want to invite patrons of all ages and needs to explore the library. When I get to it in a few slides, there's a picture shown where the entrance is relative to the old library. So you'd be able to come in, see the wide open areas where you would be able to do a collection reading. And on the sides, be able to look at the collection as well as the, the rooms and be able to easily find, you know, the programs and events that you need to, that you're there for. It would also be fully accessible. So there'd be stuff like, like the assistive listening systems in the various rooms. Or even having a sensory room for those who are, who are sensitive. There might be ways to also use the sensory room when it's not used by others as a, you know, quiet meditation. We're looking for adaptability to be able to get maximum use out of each of the rooms that we have in the library.
The open floor plan is also key to staff. The improved sightlines is critical. You don't realize how much time our staff spends on security and looking over because of the stack configurations in our current library. The open sightlines are critical as well as the natural light. Just it's an inviting aspect as well as the, the light provides, you know, a nice flow to everything as well. And as Chris described, when you come in, you come into the new portion to the front door. But both the first and the second level that we proposed highlights the historic aspect of our, our library because the older portion we are maintaining, you'd see the, the stone wall of the original portion of the library.
That's a good segue to the next slide. We're, we want to make sure that, you know, we have a strong sense of identity of history with the, with the Lucy Robbins Wells Library. The building was built in nineteen thirty-nine. We want to make sure that's a spotlight in the, in the new library as well. And in fact, that's, that's the, that's the structure that's, you know, going to remain even if everything else, you know, gets renovated. We want to make sure that, you know, you still get that familiarity of seeing it once you come in. Just making sure that, you know, old and new are harmoniously brought together so that while we're still planning for the future, we can embrace the past. The reimagined library would be planned to be flexible for use during all of its open hours. Each rooms would be, would have movable furniture to be reconfigured depending on what programs or events might be held during the different times of the day, different days of the week. Trying to make sure that we're also adaptable, as I was mentioning before, making maximum usage of the space that, that we would have. For example, having the community room potentially be partitioned so that you could have smaller events or leave it open to have a much larger event. Teen areas that would get heavy use during after school and weekend hours could potentially be used as a, you know, remote business centers during the day or even senior gathering spaces. All right, so I'm going to try to kind of orient everyone to, to the building so that you can see what the conceptual design. The original building is all the way to the left in the slide there. It'll be facing Cedar Street. So you'll get familiarity from, from being able to see the same view that you see currently. When you're driving down Cedar Street, you'll still see the original building still facing the street there. Having a larger children's area with an outside area is what we had promoted before, the community area as well. Down towards the bottom, that would be, that would allow for external access along with all the outdoor event space that, that follows along from outside the building there as well. Leanne, you want to?
The Board of Trustees privately raised monies to purchase the two houses and properties that were in two thousand and three and two thousand and nine respectively adjacent to the library on Mazacolli White Way. Always with a long-term goal of future expansion and renovation. And the proposed addition and renovation that you see there extends across these properties from the historic portion of the building toward Garfield Street, extending the building onto the first lot. And the second lot would accommodate the exterior improvements as well as the seventy-five parking spaces.
All right, so again, down onto the, onto the ground floor. Once again, I'll point out that we still highlight the original building all the way to the left. Where you would enter is all the way to the right. As I said, facing Garfield Street. So you'd be able to walk through a whole open collection and reading area until you get to where the original building would be. Towards the top, you'll see that the children's area is greatly expanded with a planned outdoor space connected to it that would be securely still part of the library. And down below, there's also the enlarged teen, teen room area over to the, over to the left on the bottom there. And then the community room to the right where it would have capacity for about three times the current size of the, of the community room that we, that we have currently. One of the other aspects, as Leanne was talking about with our three-legged stool, is we want to make sure that we bring the friends inside, so they don't have to spend time in the shed. That, you know, so we are making sure that we're dedicating space in our design for the friends to be inside. Again, up to the second floor, as we keep talking about maximizing the use of space, we would be going to full, a full second floor, whereas right now we have basically partial, a partial use of the, of a second we would be going to full second floor, whereas right now we have basically a partial use of a second floor in the building. Down below, you see that there would be maker spaces studios, as I said, to encourage creativity, collaboration among town residents and outside our community as well.
And the other thing is that currently we have an extremely limited space available, both for group meetings as well as study space. These spaces are always in demand and we actually have to limit groups as to how many times they can have a meeting annually. And we have to limit how our people have study space. There's always a demand. So with this multipurpose function of space, we'd be able to pick it up to many more groups and individuals and hopefully meet this demand in a better manner.
Again, now to the numbers for the design. The current existing library area is 23,600 square feet. So the proposed total library area, just the building itself, would more than double to over 55,000 square feet. In addition to that, we talked about a lot of the exterior area. We would be almost 15,000 square feet of additional exterior area for our outdoor events and outdoor seating that the people would be able to come to. Project schedule would be between design and construction would come to about two and a half years.
And money, money is always a question. We would look for, to various funding sources, obviously referendum, state funding. We would solicit our state representatives to work with us to find as much available funding as we could. We would pursue grants. We've talked about sustainability grants, other available grants. There's grants for the Connecticut State Library. We have been working with the town manager and the town grant consultant to find out availability of these grants. And we would apply, absolutely, we would work diligently to do so. The other thing is there would be an active fundraising campaign by the Board of Trustees. We would encourage private donations. For the 1988 edition, almost 40 years ago, the Board of Trustees raised over $800,000 in private donations to assist with that particular renovation. We would actively do this as a Board of Trustees as well. And then as a reminder, the Board of Trustees already heavily invested in this project. We purchased the two houses and properties adjacent to the library for half a million dollars. Now, by charter, we're a free library. We can't charge for our services. Half a million dollars is a substantial fundraising effort with small increments. Like someone decided that they were pleased with the way they were treated as a patron at the library and made a contribution. Or a group leaves a donation because they were able to use space. For our 5K fundraiser, that's a lot of small increments to put out half a million. We're already very much invested in this project.
Up there is the estimated project costs.
Yeah, and this estimate was developed last summer. And potential cost increases were already built into it for the next two years. We also have several contingencies built into it. Now, the design is conceptual, we understand that. What ends up on the following end is not necessarily what's drawn here. But this design does incorporate what the Board of Trustees, library staff, LARK, the design and architectural consultants have striven to provide a plan that encompasses all the needs, the space, the innovation and flexibility that the library will require in the future.
So I would just like to point out again that, you know, who uses the library? A lot of the town currently uses the library. We had 800 programs with almost the same number of attendees as we have residents in town. And those residents ran the gamut from being infant toddler all the way up to senior citizen. Library also is a building that's open over 320 days a year. So for that reason, Lucy Robbins Wells Library is open for all seasons, all reasons. It is a place that we want everyone to feel comfortable coming to to learn, play and work. Thank you for your time. Thank you again for your time this evening. If there are any questions or counsel, certainly take those now. Last, I'd just like to mention that any member of the public is also interested in this project, welcome to come to any LARK meeting or the Board of Trustee meeting and speak under public participation.
Thank you guys so much for that presentation. I will open it up for questions from counselors. Counselor Plaid.
Thank you, Mayor. Leanne, Chris, Eric, thank you for being here and for all your hard work on this project and for the LARK committee for all the long, arduous, hard work of a long period of time that has gone into this process. I want to start by thanking you for that. And I think this is just remarkable. We saw when obviously the town hall was renovated, that we lost in our town hall a community space, a recreational space, particularly for our teens and for young people that we so desperately needed. And it was a mistake to have lost that space. And I don't think we've recovered as a community, our young people have recovered as a community in the absence of that space, especially during COVID when it was that much more necessary, right? And I see in this space a supplement to that, a replacement for that, and then some. And so I think it's really exciting that this is something that we're discussing. And like you said, the library is everything to everyone. For a lot of people, this is their only direct access to Wi-Fi. It's their only direct access to services, to knowledge of services and to knowledge about job training, to a million things. And it really is a massive community hub. So I think this is a conversation that needs to be had. I'm just going to get right to the point, though. It's a $43 million project. And so one of the questions that I have is of those three buckets that you identified, public bond funds, grants and private contributions. I know you spoke a little bit about this, but do you have an anticipated portion of that 43 million that you anticipate raising from each of those pots that we can be aware of?
Well, obviously referendum would be at the, you know, pleasure of the council as to what the final amount would be. But I will say that when you look back, I mean, it's an incredible amount of money. I won't dispute that. However, I can go back and I can look to some things that have happened here. You're talking basically a renovation addition. We have a town hall that is a few years old. And that was 28.8 million for bond amount and then another $3.2 million in CIP funding, which is about 32 million because then we had to do, there was the temporary parking lot costs that occurred as well as whether you bring in the OFI, which is another 1.8 million. So you're talking about $35 million for a town hall that's a few years old. And we've had some issues that don't meet all the needs. Anna Reynolds is at 35.5 currently. And I grant you, state funding is the half. But that's what you're talking about when you're talking about this type of major construction. It's not cheap and it's only going to go up in the future. As we talked about the various problems that we're addressing with challenges of the physical plant, these physical plant issues aren't going to go away. 250 work orders to facilities last year, never mind the major renovations that were done. How much are we expending on the Band-Aids? So as I said, it's a large amount of money and I won't dispute that. But when you come back to actually funding sources, the Connecticut Library grant, for example, can be up to $2 million and you have an extended period of time. You can't go for it particularly until the referendum is, you know, approved. But we would apply for it. We've been working diligently on that for years. In fact, we're almost to the point where it could be completed and submitted. Once we're, we've been working on that. We have a structural engineering report that we have to do on the base building so they can evaluate that because that has to be incorporated for it. But we are working diligently toward this. As to fundraising, we will go out there and beat the bushes for funds. Also, I mentioned the Friends Group. Their fundraising has been our programs, but they're also a big support system for us to go out and address the community and say, please come and give us money and support the library. We would solicit private donations from various larger corporations. That's what we did in 1988 and I would foresee we would do the same thing. It's not just a $5 contribution from, you know, great Aunt Martha because she wants to support the library. We're going to go out there and beat the bushes for people to support it. And as to the state, I would actively engage our representatives and senators to work for us, whether it be something as simple as if, for example, the state, if we are approved for the Connecticut Library Bond, we have to get on the governor's bonding list to be approved. We need their help to get on that list. So I mean, those are the kind of things that we are actively looking to do.
That'd be great. I mean, you know, the Board of Trustees does a terrific job with fundraising and we all understand that. And so we don't doubt that, you know, that there is a robust fundraising effort that would come with something like this. But we also want to anticipate if the bulk of the funds is or intended to come from public bonding dollars, we need to understand what portion is a bulk.
Absolutely. And it's not that we wouldn't, as I said, we have the Friends, but we also have our board. Now, we have investments that are encumbered. We can only do certain things. Somebody left money and it only can be used for cultural programs. We also have investments. You have to remember that while the library is part of the town, the library is a private institution, the corporation that owns it is a trust, the trustees rather. We have to maintain operating expenses. We have to maintain insurance, accounting, everything else that the town doesn't pay for, we pay for. So we have to have operating expenses. So we have to clear that through our restricted funds. But then in general, we have those donations, all those, you know, people give here and there. And we've been fortunate that people have left us some money. We are currently in, working with our investment advisor, Kingston Wealth Management, and they're doing an analysis of what we potentially could give from our unrestricted funds that aren't tied up for programming and other assorted, you know, large print books or whatever that people have given that we can potentially give. But we also have to be conservative in the sense that we have to maintain the business of the library as well.
And I would just like to add too is that this being the first informational update session as well, we're not, you know, just stopping here and that's it. We're continuing to do the work to be prepared for the, I'll say, the final presentation before asking on referendum and everything. And so, you know, as we're doing that, we can develop more, a better idea of the estimate of what can be given from each of the various pieces and everything so that by the time that final presentation comes up, we can give an even better idea at that point.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Counselor Page.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would repeat what's been said already. Thank you very much for being here tonight for this fantastic presentation and for the vision that you've articulated for all of us. It's beautiful. I think it's consistent with what a little I've seen as I looked around the country in terms of best practices and the vision for libraries and their role in municipalities, in towns and all the services that you've just described and that we experience day in and day out. And libraries play a vital role to our, this library plays, our library plays a vital role to Newington. So likely likewise, I too have, and I think we all have concerns and we share your concerns about cost and the economics of all this. And I think I can speak for the entire council in saying, we want this to be successful. We want the library project to move forward and to be successful. And in that spirit, a few questions. First of all, before we get to more questions about finances, just a couple of smaller points. The community room, with that, you may have said this already, would that have dividers like this room has? So then we could, I'm seeing nods, so then we could use, it looks like a very large space and we could accommodate two or three groups and be creative with that space?
Yeah, I think when I mentioned about the adaptability, we were talking about the community room having partitions for smaller events, but also leaving the partition out for, to have like three times the size of the current.
Thanks. And then, did you say there's a basement?
Yes.
There is, a full basement.
Not all the way through.
I don't think, it wasn't on the plane.
Not what we proposed here. It does incorporate that and there's a second elevator to get down to the other portion of it. We still have the current, if you've been in the basement of the original building, that's a lovely spot. And it would expand under a portion of the building. It's not the full extension.
Right, okay. And parking, help me with the math. I know parking has been talked about on and on and on for all interests and all projects. Help me with the math and I don't expect you to get into all the engineering, but how do we go from 27 to 75, but we're adding so much space for an amazing library? How does that happen?
I can tell you when we did the temporary lot with the idea of assisting with the town hall when they were, you had two new, you had a building come down and a new building come up. So we had to have space for parking. It was not the best configured lot. It was actually downsized because of cost. And so the configuration of it allows for basically a big circle and 27 spots around the lot. If you come across and that the proposal, it would come around the backside and down the side and around the front. And it accommodates 75. It was one of the things that when we were first talking to the architect, we walked it basically, the library had about two acres. And we're utilizing all of the two acres.
Okay.
A lot of the green space you see there today is going to go with the high school buildings. They're going to push it out more of the property.
Got it. And that number, was that based on sort of function following form, if that's the way it's called? Or is it based on an actual analysis, if you look out 20 or 30 years as to its utilization and the growth of the town? My concern would be, and I've said this before with other proposed projects, I'm maybe the only one, and maybe it's insane to suggest because people are concerned about the aesthetic and character of our town. But given the scope of this project, I think the parking should be based on, and maybe you've done it, so please tell me, but an actual analysis of projected needs over the next 20, 30 years. And should we consider some sort of parking garage, either underground or something that would be designed aesthetically consistent with this project to meet not only the needs of the library, but town hall needs and park needs, et cetera?
Well, there's never enough parking. There just never is, particularly with the campus format. Because we're all on top of each other. But I can say that the 75 is not something we arbitrarily came up with. That was developed between the library consultant as well as the architectural. It wasn't just something we came up with. And the library consultant is big on projections in terms of where we're at. So that 75 is primarily addressing library use, not necessarily campus-wide use.
Okay.
As to a parking structure, that is beyond my tent.
All right, just something that I'll continue to bring up because I think it has been done. It is done in other communities that are also beautiful. Our town is beautiful and I think it can be done if we are open to those possibilities. And it costs money and we may not have the money to do that. I get that. So and then just a couple of other comments and I'll defer, or questions. Have you undertaken, one thing we've learned in other projects is that there's lots of tangling that happens between all stakeholders and that's a good thing. It's called democracy. And there arguably will be lots of discussion online and in, hopefully in-person forums moving forward with this amazing project. Has there been a formal data gathering in the form of surveys, focus groups or meetings with all sorts of demographics within the town to really get a sense of what the community wants and needs from our library?
I do know that from the suggestion box that we've had at the library, that I've been forwarded from the library staff, what suggestions have been coming into there. I've been trying to kind of tabulate and try to see if there's any patterns of, you know, you know, specific, you know, main areas that, you know, to try to hit first and then work through those. As far as actual surveys, I don't believe we've done any surveys for this time around. The suggestion box has kind of been pulling in the information from there.
And the intent would be that this would be something that we'd be working on. Though I will say that a lot of the responses that were received in the earlier surveys are something that you see again. People are looking for the same thing because we are dealing with the same current building and they're looking for other things.
Sure, sure. Okay, then my last question, then I'll stop talking is regarding phases. One possibility, and others may cringe at this, especially those who have done an amazing job of having a beautiful vision for the next generation of our library. So I would get the cringing at this, but as a pragmatic issue, in large part because of concerns about cost and wanting it to be successful at referendum, is there a way to design this from an engineering, architectural and engineering standpoint so we could conceivably build in, say, a three-phase project where there would be that first piece that would meet some of your most critical needs of mechanicals and HVAC and storage and maybe some other aspects of this that are absolutely essential. It's all essential, but we have to set priorities. And then a second phase over the course of X number of years that then could expand. And then the third would be the icing on that cake, whether it's the first floor to second floor or something similar to that. So is that a consideration?
We have considered it and it was something discussed extensively with the architect. The problem being is basically The problem being is basically what you have is a, a new build that's going on to an old building.
Yeah.
You can't address systems and then build a new building around it.
Okay.
Um, phasing doesn't really work with the, with the concepts that we're trying to get up. And we did address that because again, cost aspects, but, um, it, we, we were encountering difficulty trying to phase it.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Thank you and very much for being here on this great presentation. Thank you, Mary. Thanks.
Counselor Maggie.
I'd just take it. Thank you for your presentation. There's certainly a lot here to, to, uh, to read over in the next few weeks. And I thank you for your efforts. I know this has been a, a long, arduous task to, to look at all these drawings and, and consider everybody's points of view. Just a couple, a couple of comments I, I made. Just as you were talking about the, the two hundred and fifty work orders, I, it just dawned on me. And maybe the town manager, could you could have said, uh, a, a, some kind of a report on, on what other town facilities, what work order?
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. I know that Joe Salamone has, has, we've spoken about some of these work orders I, I am.
I know there is a new software we, we bought a couple of years ago, I believe, that has work orders and I, I would just like to know what, what the work.
Yeah.
How does Lucy Robbins Wells compared to the senior center compared to the high school compared to, to other school and just what?
Yeah, certainly. I can ask Joe to prepare basically a memo that would outline some of the issues he sees.
I think the council would be interested in that. I think that's comparing one to the other, then that's important to know with it, but that's, interesting, you know. I just want to make a bigger point that the, the parking, I, I'm, I'm a a firm believer in we need more parking. Um, and that, your increase in the parking spaces does not include the parking that's designated for town employees.
No, because it runs to the, runs to the property line of the two houses, does not include the Garfield parking.
And just, I, I, you kept, because I was involved in building the parking lot as it currently stands, I, I just would, would make sure that we realize that, I, I know when we built the parking lot and stood, there was a, a major problem with the neighbors to the east of us. And maybe Eric, you remember that, that we were flooding their yards and there was a whole, a whole issue with, with that and that was a problem. So just, just moving the parking lot to the east may not be as easy as it, it looks because there was, there was that problem with, with flooding and we had to put all kinds of issues in there.
Yeah, that's down the road and we can get it more engineering and buffering and screening for those properties as well, but that's.
Right, okay.
It, it has, when we were meeting with the architect, when we were walking the property, we did describe the issues that we were having. So it's, it's not something that is not, they're, they're not aware of. But granted, we're, we're dealing with a conceptual proposal right now, but these are things that we are considering.
Right. And when we, we built, when we started building the parking lot, we talked with everybody too. And then once we built the parking lot, then we found the, the issues were there and there was, I think we had neighbors banging down the door and threatening to sue us and all kinds of nasty things happening. Um, the other question is during the construction, do you plan to keep the library open? Do you plan to relocate it? Do you plan to close? What's the plan?
One of the costs that we've included is transition space. Um, in nineteen eighty-eight, we moved to the senior center. That's where we operated out of. There are, we have looked at a couple of things, but because everything is moving parts. For example, one of the, um, in the early times of this, maybe a couple of years ago, we were looking at maybe OFI. Well, you know, um, we would probably have limited ability and we'd probably have to store a lot of the collection offsite, but we would look to maintain our services.
And, and I, I would just like to add too is that before the final presentation, um, with the, with the referendum, that, um, we'll be working with the library staff on the, on more detailed transition plan about where, what would be happening to still support the library services.
Okay. And my other major concern, I think, is like everybody's is, is the budget. I, I, I granted, you can, you know, ask for fundraising. We can, we can do, you know, do fundraising and all that and we can get grants, um, but it's still a, is a large nut to, to ask the taxpayers to fund. And I think, I think it might be important to get, getting suggestions from those people to use the library is great, but it's the people that don't use the library that you're gonna have to convince. Those of us who use the library, I think we're all in favor of it. It's those people who aren't using the library that are gonna be the tougher nut to sell. So it, it, it may be who you to go out and did in, into, in, into, into the streets and the neighborhoods and ask, yeah, do you use the library? No. Okay. What do you think about this? Because they're the ones that are gonna tell you whether this plan will, will pass referendum or not, because they're the ones that, um, are about yes or no. And getting, getting suggestions from people who use the library is great, but they're already there. And they already see it and they already see the need for it. You know, we, we already use the library and, you know, I see the need for it. We see the need for it. The two hundred and fifty, the quarter Winterfest saw the need for it. But those aren't the people you have to convince, people that, that, that are the taxpayers that are sitting home that don't use the library and check it.
One of the things that we were going to do as we continued this process was to actually run tours. We made you all go on them. Have people walk behind the scenes, act as docents and show them the spots and what we're dealing with. And, um, I was on the committee years ago that was involved in getting the schools renovated in the early two thousands. And we brought people to the mushroom room down in Chaffey School where the mushrooms grew up the side of the wall and music classes were happening, things like that. Soon as people see that, that kind of thing, you know, they, they can walk into a back room where you've got eight people sharing four desks and the storage is under the desk. I mean, they can't even move in their chairs. Those are the kind of things that, yes, actually we're very good as a town and as a library where you don't see things when you walk in the library because we're so good at what we do. But if you go in the back room, it's blah. So we're, that's one of the things we're hoping to do.
So, Counselor? Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you for that presentation. This is an absolutely amazing looking library. I mean, everybody would want to have one like this. A lot of my questions were answered. Um, just quickly, I know you talked a little bit about, um, your operating funds and, and how would this expansion impact on your operating funds?
Well, we would hope to contribute to it. As I said, we're evaluating what we need ten years out for those operating expenses that we are responsible for, as well as evaluating what we have committed to various restricted funds and endowments and things that have to be used for certain things. We can't take a cultural program and pay, you know, for the insurance. Um, we can't move it to the expansion. But we are evaluating that and that's something that's in the works. We have an investment committee and we're working with our, uh, Kingston Wealth Management, our investment advisor to determine what we could potentially put toward the project. In addition to the five hundred thousand dollars, the half a million dollars that we've already invested in the, in the, um, land, we have to maintain insurance on that with the, your parking lot on top. I mean, those are things that have to be done. So, I mean, there are costs that we have to cover, but, um, we are actively looking. We want to be able to contribute to this. And, um, we would, as I said, we would go out there and beat the bushes for donations as well. Thank you.
Counselor Jacob?
Yeah, I get my questions are a little bit more, maybe too much in the woods, but first of all, I want to say, um, you're open seven days, you serve all age, you serve the entire community. I think there's more traffic in a library of, from different members of the community, you know, diverse members of the community than possibly any other public building in this town, including the town hall. Because you, because of your hours, because of the, the programs, uh, and what you serve, um, you've been very patient.
That's for sure.
You've been a team player. Um, and you know, you've been told, I know you've been told in the past, wait, wait, wait. Well, in my opinion, uh, this is not, it's your turn and it's your time. So I certainly hope, I certainly support this project. Again, you know, the cost is gonna be a tough sell, but if you, the people who aren't using the library now, you're gonna, they, they will be using it in the future if some of these, um, you know, the, the community rooms, the expanded programming, whatever. So I think that's absolutely wonderful. Let me ask about the first thing, and maybe this is a parrot question. I don't know. Can you explain what a green roof is? Are we gonna have like, like one mowers out there?
Sustainable type of roof. I mean, it can be, you know, looked at to, you know, anything can, I think, can be looked at with the architect going forward to see to reduce costs and alleviate some concerns. And that's something I believe, you know, will pay back to the board and the board will have discussions with their.
Is this really grass?
It, it, it's, it's, it's a sedum plant. Um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a little maintenance plant that, that helps, uh, um, I, I think with the, the cooling and, and on, on the roof of the building as well. So, so that's, that's what the aspect is. But, um, you also notice in the slides, I think that the green roof is a line item in there as well. So.
I believe, uh, they have, they have a pass one up a Yukon.
My second, um, and I, I don't, well, I mean, I'm just gonna say, it's just my opinion and it's not gonna, um, I'm still gonna support this, you know, going forward, whatever, you know, library wants. But I'm, I'm very happy that, you know, the old, the Lucy Robbins Wells house is being maintained. But I kind of, the outer design to me looks a little disjointed. I thought the design was gonna be a little bit more cohesive so that the whole building will maintain its kind of historical look. I think there's, there's an awful lot of wooden, wood and glass, particularly a lot of glass. And, you know, I just thought that, that there would have been, you know, weathered bricks, more weathered bricks or whatever. But that's just my personal opinion, just aesthetically. And from some of the internal, one of the things I love about the library, oh my God, is homey. When you walk in there, I feel like I'm in somebody's living room or, or whatever. And I just hope that in the, you know, for the FFME, whatever, you'll try and incorporate a little bit more of the feel of the home of Lucy Robbins Library rather than some of this, it looks pretty modern and pretty cold and sterile parts of some of these pictures.
A lot of the pictures you have are generic architectural concept drawings at this point. I mean, certainly interior design as well as exterior design, we've had conversations about this, making the old blend with the new. And the intent within this proposal is to keep like the current old, um, the quiet reading room as it stands with the fireplaces and the woodwork and the whole thing and the, and the, um, stone facade. And then you'd come into the new portion of it. I think some of the concerns that you just said have been, um, stated by board members. We're looking to make this blend well. And certainly, this is not the final. Well, while we are happy with the design, there is always ways to tweak it. And we, we've, we've talked with the architect about how do you meld that joint? How do you make it happen? Do you do pilasters on the, on the windows, but you keep the great glass and things like that? These are all things that you're getting down to when you're in building committee. You really are. When you're, when you're talking with your final architect to design this. And, and I think these concerns can be addressed. But we were bringing it to you as a concept. And while we would love to get into the nitty gritty and color of carpet and pilasters and everything else, that wouldn't be helpful to the process here. That comes later.
Well, probably my next question then maybe is a little, but it's, but because of the, of what you're presenting, I did look online and looked at some things about, um, the amount of glass, shall we say? And from what I've read is that if you're not careful, particularly in a facility where there's a lot of books and paper, whatever, there could be damage from the UV rays. I don't know how much is gonna be coming in. And the heat loss and gain because there, there's lack of insulation. Is that, I'm assuming that you've explored this because there's an awful lot of glass?
I'm sure that the architect has, has looked at it and, and done whatever they do. My, my thinking is, um, and I haven't really discussed it with Lark yet, is to actually maybe even talk to Joe from facilities and see what his concerns might be going forward as he's gonna end up having to maintain part of this building. Point out some things that maybe we overlooked, such as all the glass, the green roof, these kinds of things and say, hey, you know, these could be maintenance nightmares. This is a better option, things like that, just to potentially, um, to, you know, and at least somebody else is, is putting an eye on it potentially and make them move forward. You know, and maybe take some of those recommendations into account, at least so the board knows that these could be potential issues or not, you know, if that's, uh, I mean, I don't.
A, a lot of what you're saying with the glass and the collections and things, so collection is spaced very differently. It's along the outside walls that are usually, they're more interior walls, um, as well as stacks. The ideal configurations typically now have gathering areas closer to the, the windows and, um, provide that natural light. But again, these are concept.
And then just one other thing. Has it, um, in the discussions, has it ever come up about making more concrete connectivity with the town hall, like maybe a walkway between the two or, um, using some of the current medical way for open space or just wondering whether it ever came up?
I, I don't, I don't know if it's specifically come up. Um, I, I know that we're, we're trying to kind of, you know, be more of a part of, of, of the campus, um, as, you know, with everything, um, new with the town hall and the police department over there and being able to kind of, um, you know, be able to, um, blend in with there so that, you know, we're a more cohesive campus. But I don't think that we've had specific discussions about.
There was when the town hall first developed, um, there was a connector aspect of it that was gonna take us from the current front door over to the town hall. As the town hall got reworked, that kind of fell us to the side. Um, and my understanding is it wouldn't really work with the way the current configuration of town hall is because you don't dump into the main.
Some of the staff rooms where you do everything except pile desks on top of the other and have little ladders leading up to, oh, that's my desk up there. I, I guess that's where I'll sit today. And also, you know, as, as, as a liaison to, to the Board of Trustees, um, having seen this, um, but now I'm glad that you've, you know, now we have the time to have you come and present to the rest of the town council and to other folks out there, you know, out here either on Zoom or here in the, um, council chambers. Some of the questions that I had, um, have already been, uh, asked and, and addressed. One thing I do want to say, and you've touched on it, but I think it really bears repeating and, and exploring is the connection that the library has to Newton Public Schools and that real relate. It, it's just, it's just such a strong relationship and that can't be for me emphasized enough. And I think that can only get better with an expansion of the library and facilities to provide even better resources and, um, experiences for faculty and students.
And the Board of Education, uh, the public schools are involved, but we also collaborate with the preschools that are in town. They're coming into programs. I mean, we're, we're working with, um, all the academics, if you will, within town. And, um, certainly I know that, uh, there is preschools that I'm affiliated with, would love to come more often. But again, space constraints, staffing, et cetera. So I, I think the space would be utilized and particularly by children and the schools.
We talked a little bit about repairs and I think maybe it was Counselor Maggie who, uh, who asked about, um, work orders. And, and I'd be curious to see maybe over even the last three years, what the costs have been in terms of the work orders and repairs and the, the maintenance to the library as it stands now. So if we get that information, I think that would be really helpful because we're, you know, we're, when, when we talk about costs.
Another cost that does come up, which is not part of necessarily the facilities cost, is that a lot of times, particularly with these leaks in the atrium and other things that facilities has addressed, we have major program interruption, staffing interruption and collection damage.
Right.
And those don't necessarily get replaced, um, right away, particularly the collections. It's, it's difficult.
Right. So I'm, you know, I'm really, with the way, the way the situation is now, I'm, I'm very curious as to what, how, how much we're spending, not, not only in terms of, of cost, but in terms of person power and, and person hours. And what impact, and you just mentioned some of that, that it has on the town, um, just in general. You've addressed that. I had questions about our neighbors over the fence, but that's already been, been addressed. I'm very pleased to see how much flexibility has gone into the design of these new proposed, the concepts and the new proposed spaces, that they can be used for, for multiple purposes, um, over time. And I really appreciate that. The ethological considerations, that's always something that's very close to my heart and, you know, here. And, you know, hearing and seeing the, the possibility of a green roof, I, I just, I think that's amazing. It's cutting edge. We see it happening more and more, and I would, I would love to see that at, at this library. The internal and external spaces and how those flow between the two. And, and, and it just provides so many more, so much more, not only space, but ways for people to engage. The only other question I have, and this is probably going into, I know I, was that many of us, all, almost all of us, I think, were at with your best, and I know you had the presentation right out front at, at the doors, people were coming in, which was great. What ideas do you have or what are you proposing moving forward over the next couple of months in terms of, hate to use the term marketing, but marketing and providing information and gathering feedback from community members? And I'll say, this is not just a library for Newington, but we know and we've heard time and time again from many other people from surrounding towns that they come to specifically to the Newington Library because of what it provides. Excuse me, and how much they appreciate our library as compared to, and I won't name names, but some of the other libraries in the surrounding area. So what, what ideas do you have about getting all, getting this information out there? Talking to people, soliciting not only interest, but donations, possible donations. You know, people don't know what they don't know. So what's your intent?
So I, I know Leanne had mentioned before about, you know, being able to provide tours to the library. I know some of the public that attended one of our Lark meetings had mentioned, you know, accommodating for, for everyone in our community. You know, the, the younger people, the senior citizens, making sure timing wise, you know, being able to possibly have tours on, on, on weekends, if that works better for people. Another option that we were talking about is, I'll, I'll say like a night at the library. Kind of like, you know, we, we'd have an informational meeting, you know, in a community room where people could bring their concerns and their questions and get, give additional information on the library. I, I've seen how, how well information meetings like recently with, we had with the cultural district, you know, worked out, just gathering information from that. I know that we're, we're still looking into other avenues, I think, to park it as well.
Yeah, and, and as to fundraising, well, we just solicited you here about the 5K. We are not afraid to ask for money. I mean, we, we're out there, we have a really great crew of fundraising committee that is out there looking for support. The library staff helps us with, with contacting businesses and people within the community and, and saying, hey, would you mind giving this? Would you mind giving that? And sometimes all you have to do is ask. It's just a quick question of asking. If they're not asked, they don't give. But I think we have a pretty good system in place that we can expand upon. And we will lean heavily on our friends to assist us with that as well. They want to come out of the shed.
It's a very nice shed, a much larger shed than what we have.
And, and I also know as, as, as the Chair of the Facility and Site Committee, that's been heading up a lot of this effort of the Library Board, we're working hand in hand with our Communications Committee as well to garner the, the ideas for how we would get the, get the word out to the people that not only just use the library, but like you were saying before is, you know, we, we need to reach the people who, who don't use the library. And frankly, they may not see what, what, what the use of, of the library is, so.
Well, thank, thank you very much for taking all this time and educating all of us and, and anyone else who has been listening in.
Councilor Nagel.
Thank you, Mayor. I originally had put my hand up, we couldn't tell, and I thought towards the beginning, but they, there was something technically we couldn't do. And then I blanked out in the middle of this. So I didn't know where I was in the pecking order. So here I am now, asking at the end as opposed to the beginning. So a lot of things that I had wanted to, to question you about, you, you've already answered. And so as this meeting's been going on and my things to ask have gone on and on, both, I believe, Councilor, or rather Deputy Mayor Rada and myself have had the most experience with, with the library directly. Having been the liaison in the library over the last, well, up and on eighteen, twenty years. Also various different incarnations of expansion committees, a corporate member for a period of time. So I know full well of what's been going on and I wanted to leave the time for others who hadn't had that knowledge to speak. But to give that, I want to boil it down to more specifics beyond what's already been asked. During the period of time between now and when you come back to us, can you further give information about how you are, plan to refine or change or whatever the details that you have given right now to make it even a clearer picture as to what goes to referendum? I realize what's here is a vision. It's not the final product. And once you get the brick and mortar construction with the building committee, things change for one reason or another. Could you comment on that in any more detail?
Well, I, I know we, we have various, I'll say, next steps that, that we're already thinking for the, to refine the presentation. Leanne mentioned about with the grants, we're, you know, seeking a structural engineer to be able to get that report information and be, and show that we're pursuing that grant. Also, as I said, working with the library staff on the transition plan. So again, more details on that to be able to include in, in the presentation itself. As well as being able to review, I'll say, current space, space square footage. So we can do a more apples to apples comparison, community room here, community room for the library, meeting room here, meeting room for the library. So as I said, this was an initial, initial informational update. But for that presentation, we were going to try to get into more of the details of, so you could easily see, you know, this is what you're getting with the new library versus the space, you know, that we're, that we're constrained to in the current library.
Yeah, of course. Architect was just gonna, we'll refine the plan, would actually be present at the more formal presentation for council. So you guys could ask these more in-depth questions as well. And we realized that, you know, if this does go reference, it does pass, you know, then it would basically, it's out of our hands. You just turn it over to a permanent building committee and, you know, other changes could be made going forward.
Of course, I'm, I'm in favor of having this move forward, having gone through several incarnations of this and going to the public for the public to finally decide what they wish to do. Hopefully this council will make a wise decision when that time comes. Is there anything that hasn't been asked already? That, or that in your presentation, you just didn't mention unintentionally that you wish to add that might help us at this point in the community as well? I know that's a difficult question, but you know, you might have gone, oh, I didn't mention that.
Been here the longest sitting at this table. I can, I can speak to the fact that one of the reasons that I'm so pleased with this presentation is because of the time, though the delays have been frustrating over time in terms of wait and, and hold off and what have you. We have been able to fine tune this. Now, I grant you, like I said, it's not necessarily the specific building you will get. But as I mentioned a couple of times during our presentation, we've encountered things over time and it's a learning curve. And, and for example, if this had come to you in 2018, we wouldn't have had the knowledge that we, we gained tremendous knowledge during COVID of what was necessary and what was needed for the, for the, the public and on our patrons. So these are things that we're trying to incorporate. And, and while this design may shift a bit, the various multi-purpose rooms, the multifunctionality of the library, the innovation and the ability to grow and adapt. We've learned, I mean, it would have been very hard for 1988 to foresee the growth of technology. But we are trying to go out that far and we're utilizing consultants who are doing just that. I can speak to the fact that several of us, and my husband doesn't like it, but when we go on vacation, I have to go to wherever the local library is and see how they're handling certain issues. And I go to the director and say, hi, can you show me your staff space? He's just like, okay. And, and I'm not the only one. We're, we're all out there kind of searching the internet and, and doing these public tours and, and going to various libraries. And when somebody does a renovation, we go and see what works. It's not necessarily we want to build their library, what would work in that library here at Lucy. So I would say that would be an advantage, but we would like to not wait much longer.
I do want to add, thank you for adding that. I do want to add that I appreciate all that you have done, all the present renovation committee has been doing, library boards, members past, present, be they corporate members or be they members that are selected by this, by this body and indeed the staff for all the years that they put in in one way or another to bring us finally to this point. That's been one that I know people have been trying to get to, to bring a, a decision and, and a plan that we can all move forward to and make the library what it should be today. Because as you've mentioned, the changes that have happened in terms of how libraries are used and what technology has come to pass over the last six, seven years. And how the present library just doesn't have the ability to do that. And with that, I'll, I'll pass the word on to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Geniakas.
Hey, guys, thank you for coming. It's great to see a presentation about this. I've, I've heard about it for a long time, so it's nice to see it manifest. I only have a few questions for you guys. The bird's eye view of the, like, the, the general layout plan shows that the parking lot's gonna overlap with some of the tree line on the opposite side of the building there. So I'm just wondering, like, will that involve taking trees down? And have we spoke to the residents that own the adjacent lot next to those trees?
For this particular iteration, we haven't gone to them. I know that we worked very hard and the, the town, you know, parks and rec and all the various towns are working very hard to accommodate the neighbors. Change is hard for all. And you, you really have the majority of the, the building, the current building is already almost fitted to the line.
Yeah.
You'd actually be bringing it back somewhat because you're taking that addition, the 1988 addition away. And so you're bringing it back in and you bring parking around the back and down the side. I hesitate to turn around and say what could be their concerns because some of the current concerns that Tim addressed were things like, there are lights shining in my backyard now that weren't shining before. And we hadn't thought about those. And again, we, we worked as a town and as a library to try and fix that. So lights aren't glaring in people's back windows and things like that. And I think a lot of that would be a function of what happens after. But certainly we would go to them. If we're going to, to be at this point, we have to address it. And the water issues are something that definitely would have to be concerned because there are water issues down the side of that building that run down and under Garfield and into the park.
And, and Leanne, just kind of correct me if I'm, I'm saying the same correctly, but a lot of those, are they called arbor viney? That are kind of with, with the border were, were, were planted there just to kind of, you know, provide the, you know, buffer to the, to the neighbors over there and everything. So I don't know necessarily that the concept design will be, would be taking those down.
I don't know if they take them down, but we actually planted them into our land to give more of a space to them. So, so it's, it's not like those trees are on their property. It is on our property and they're more into our property to give that buffer.
Thank you. I, I think the idea of a green roof is cool. Definitely just visually looks cool. I don't think anyone's gonna really see it, but can you expand more to, to the benefits of it? You said that it helps with like the cooling of the building and things like that. And then is there like an associated maintenance that comes with maintaining that kind of roof?
My, my, my understanding with, with, with I've been able to learn, learn about the, the green roof myself is that on the plan itself is, is very low maintenance. Doesn't, doesn't require as, as, as much, you know, having to constantly ta, take care of. Beyond that, I'd, I'd have to, you know, I, I'll, I'll say personally look, look into it and, and so more. I don't want to mistake anything about the, the maintenance or the cooling cost of it. But that's, that's my understanding is that it helps, you know, it does help cool the, the, cool the building. And it's, it's, it's a low maintenance plant. So I know that much, but I'd have to look into a little bit more to, to provide an answer.
We can probably get the architect or something to present to you guys. There've been a few questions about.
Yeah, that'd be cool. All right, and I have one last one. I know, I know it's, it's a big price point, but honestly, looking at it, it all makes sense for what you're asking for. But, you know, months from now down the road, you get community engagement and you're getting the sense that maybe the price is too much. Do you guys have any kind of like Plan B or Plan C, like a secondary design that you have together in case something like this isn't appealing to the public? Because, you know, obviously we want this to go through and get voted, you know, vote, vote, vote yes if it goes to a referendum. But I'm just wanting to make sure that, I want to know if it, is this like an all or nothing kind of thing? Or are you guys flexible to have different plans, different options?
I think that we, we had talked about this, uh, going back to the boards needed and looking at these things again with the architects.
I, I think this is, the goal is to incorporate everything that's in this concept, not necessarily in this specific layout. But obviously, you know, potentially you're, you're talking, if the cost is an issue, we have to go back to the drawing board. We don't have a secondary plan, as you will. We are looking to encompass all of this so that we aren't looking at a situation where we build it and it's obsolete in five years. We're trying to grow and be able to grow beyond. And, and we encountered those problems with the 1988. And, and much like I know that there's been some, some challenges here at the town hall, what you, what you have, you, you had to expand down the street to OFI. So I mean, those are the kind of things that we're trying to avoid with this design. That doesn't mean that things can't be revisited.
Thank you.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Quick question. Could you speak to the impact, if any, that renovation of this size will have on your staffing? Is the staff that you have now able to handle all of this renovation? Or are you going to need some kind of adjustments made to staffing?
Well, one, one of the, one of the things that we talked about with, with staffing and, and Leanne had mentioned this with the sightlines is that right now the staff has to patrol a lot of the nooks and crannies that we have there. So now if we have these open sightlines, they can, they can still, you know, be in, doing their space and everything like that. We don't have to have additional staff walking up and down the stacks and making sure, you know, there's, there's no bad behavior, I'll say, you know, going on. So that's one aspect of, of kind of balancing out the staff that we need. I mean, yeah, I would imagine that there would.
Well, if you're, if you're offering more programming and, and other things, that there are potentially staff increases. We just actually regained a position that was open that hadn't been filled for years. So, I mean, obviously we always looking for, you know, a full staff. But I think it would have to be realigned in the usage of space. If you have staff areas, for example, that have sightlines out, you don't need to add people because they can see. And those open sightlines, they are a critical need. And particularly with, if you go to most libraries have been renovated now, the stacks are like what we have in the central portion of the library. They're lower, you can see beyond them. You go into the back end where fiction and biographies and everything else are, they go to the ceiling and they're in lines. And at the end of the day, we have staff who have to make sure everybody's cleared out by walking through all that and, and making sure things aren't happening where the books aren't being destroyed or, you know, things are kosher where they need to be. So I, I think the staffing question would come into play. You know, obviously the existing staffing and then it would have to be a rework of how we were using the space.
Yeah, I think we, we do some of the staff we need now.
So the current staff you have, you're feeling would be adequate to run this size of a operation?
We can probably discuss.
We can, we can, we can evaluate that. That's not something that we've done a heavy study on. So I don't want to commit to the saying, yes, we can do it with this staff. But I will say that staff will be able to have, there'll be a better efficiency with the current layout and security aspects of it. So hopefully the two will balance out, additional programming versus efficiency. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Boy.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Folks might cringe at this question, right?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Folks might cringe at this question, right? Because we're looking at a very big project and the idea that you may outgrow it at some point, this space is maybe something folks don't want to chat about, but notwithstanding the, the comments you made to Counselor Taniakas' points about coming back to the drawing board, right? If you went to the public and you feel the need to do that and the board feels the need to do that, this plan that's in front of us here, obviously, the last renovation was back in 88. Is this intended to bring us out another 40 years or, and some change? Or what does that look like? Just in kind of the landscape of the library's growth over the past some odd years?
Well, no crystal ball. Wish I had one. Hindsight, I'm sure 1988 thought they were growing it and then technology exploded. So there's always that unforeseen. But the growth here is to take us well into the future. And well beyond that, I'm off the board and probably not still around. So, you know, that is the intent here is to take us so we can, and, and the other key word here is multipurpose, flexibility, innovation. You need to be able to be flexible because the spacing needs change. Today, we might need maker space. Tomorrow, there might be some new innovation that we haven't even thought of that we'll have to have the space for. And that's the goal here is to make it so that we can be flexible.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just add to that, the fact that the interest of today may not be the interest of tomorrow. So we didn't want to, I'll say pigeonhole the, you know, the purpose of this room is going to be a very specific use or purpose. We want to make sure that, you know, it, it accounted for, I'll say, the unknowns that we don't know in the future of what the community may be interested in.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much for coming tonight and giving this presentation. The questions I had have all been answered too. So I just have a few comments I want to make. First and foremost, I think it would be great when you come back, as you said, Eric, it'd be good if we could have, like, a targeted plan for fundraising efforts. It'd be good if there's like a figure just because it'll help with the sales pitch. And maybe, 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 I, I don't know, keep that we go back, like, do different options. But as Counselor Taniakas said, if there are different options that we can look at, it would be great. I think one of the benefits we have is, you know, this isn't something that's, you know, in a vacuum and we can look at the big picture. And we've just had a referendum a year ago that failed largely due to the price tag. And one of the things that came out of that referendum that I think we took to heart and that I personally did is that, you know, one of the things the public wanted to see was all other options. So I think having multiple options to represent will make it easier on you guys to, to get it done. I think we want to see this be successful. This is another project that we've had that's come to our desk that's been past councils have put off. It's been sitting around, like you said, since 2015, since this was just 10 years ago. I was on the council 10 years ago, so I wasn't me. But I think, you know, we want to see these projects move forward for multiple reasons. Number one, you guys clearly need this. It's, it's an absolute I don't necessarily believe in taking turns. It's not like you're turned. It's a need. It's something that you guys need to address now. But we want to see it be successful. We don't want to see you push it forward and have it fail and then go back to the drawing board and still be here another five years, another 10 years, whatever that. So we want to see it be successful. So I think, I'd like to see a few different, if there's any options, an idea for a target for fundraising. And I think Deputy Mayor Rata hit it in terms of marketing. I think, you know, you guys had the benefit of seeing how the last referendum played out. So you kind of have a sense of what you're going to be facing if we put this forward. And I think, you know, we're, our position on this is that this is a decision for the people. It's not a decision for the council. That's why we have these rules in our charter and that's why it's set up that way. I'm gonna say straight up, the 43.9 million is a big, big price tag, but I also understand that, as you said, this isn't for one year. This is for 40 years or longer probably. So that's, that's a relative price, you know, 40 million today and 50 years is probably, it's not going to be the same and you're going to get your money's worth over time. So I, I totally understand that. But again, I think our, our position is we want to see it be successful. So I, I, I think if we can get some of that information at, at the next one, I think that would be great. So we can make an informed decision and bring it to the public so the public has all the information that they need to. Other than that, I, you know, I really, really appreciate you guys bringing it to us. I, I love the way it looks. I wouldn't mind moving the lawn on the roof. I like moving the lawn.
Yeah, but carry the lawn mower on your back.
It's gonna be a pulley system. We're just gonna bring it up. But, but I, I think it looks great and I, I would love to see it in our campus look like that. So I'm looking forward to, to seeing and hearing more from you guys. So go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for all your votes.
Goats, goats, goats. That would be good. Fainting goats. Thank you, guys.
Alrighty.
I'd be lucky. I bring gross seed, so I can.
I'm like envisioning a chip. All right, folks, we are going to move along to our public participation. Just as a general note, we ask you to step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Please, keep your comments civil and refrain from making personal attacks. Our process is that you get four minutes to speak. At the end of four minutes, if you're still going, I will jump in and, and ask you to wrap it up. If that doesn't happen, I will ask Scott to turn off the microphone at that point. Very good. So if, so the floor is open. If you'd like to speak in public participation, please step up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and we'll alternate between in the room and over Zoom.
We have one online. Go ahead, Ms. Havens.
Hi, Dana Havens, 113 Stoddard Avenue. I just want to say that when I saw the price tag for the library, I kind of balked at it myself, but that presentation was fantastic. And it kind of, you know, eased the pain of the cost. But I also thought that I think the town should kick in. They didn't just separate it in their price breakdown. But I think the town really should kick in for that parking lot because I see where town events take up a lot of their parking space, spaces, like even during voting, people were parking over there. And in the summer with all the events that go on, they definitely are parking over there. And then God forbid, the pool gets moved to Garfield, there's going to be even more people parking over there. So I think the town should help out the library by paying for their parking expansion. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Havens.
Thank you.
Hi, Diane Stam, 104 Stupel Chase Drive, Newington, Connecticut. Also the president of the Library Board of Trustees. So I'm just going to go quick. First of all, I'd like to thank Eric, Chris and Leanne. I too think they did a wonderful job. You saw a bunch of people here. Some of them got up and left, I think. Well, so those were board members that were here to hear what was happening and, and some public participation. But I just, I wanted to quickly answer a couple of questions. I know how hard it is to be here at this table and have questions come in and then you sit down here like, oh, 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 oh. So one, drainage solved by the town of Newington when they built that. So you're right, that was a big issue and that drainage issue has been solved. It is something to take into account when you're dealing with that property and as it goes down into Churchill. The survey that we did in 2017, we did it at the Extravaganza because we agree with you. It's, it's one thing to ask a librarian what the library needs. It's another thing to ask the community what you need. So we did that. And we've been supplementing it with smaller surveys and, and things or, you know, the suggestion box. So anybody out there in town council land or listening to this, we do have a suggestion box in the library. We'd love to hear from people more often. So just stop in and go ahead and do that. As far as the trees and the line. So because of our quasi-public-private, we do, those arboretum trees are on our property mine and they need to stay there. So they're not going anywhere. Those are going to stay. And if you look at the plan and the ceiling overview, you'll see that. The cedum roofs are supposed to be low maintenance and they're supposed, if you read the marketing materials, it's supposed to cost less in the long run and, and help maintain the roofs from, from what they are. But we will get more information on that. I just want to make sure I hit a couple of the things. A parking garage? And what we tried to do with our design was take the two out, the two acres that the library owns and maximize its use. To do that, we engaged an architect who's a library specialist. He's done libraries in Connecticut, in New Jersey, in the New York Manhattan area and stuff like that. So we, when you meet him, you'll be impressed with him as, as we were. So it wasn't things that we were just coming up with. Again, you're asking about phases, you're asking about going smaller. You know, if I, when we take down the 1988 edition and we have to add the other things on that, if we add it in small, we're going to have the same thing. We won't have a teen area. We won't have something else. We'll be looking for other properties like OFI like we did here. So just be cautious of that. I know it's a big number. And we have to get funding wherever we can get it. And we're looking at, at the different things that are available. We also hope that the community supports us in that, but we're maximizing our footprint. We don't have any place else to go. Right? Unless neighbors keep selling property to us that are, that's contingent to us, we have no place else to go. So those are just a couple of thoughts. Again, I appreciate everyone's time and comments. I hope to hear a lot from the public in terms of what works for them and what doesn't. And I encourage people to come to the library. When we have those tours, maybe we could set something up that's virtual as well. So people can see it, but please come, see the library, get to know it if you don't know it already. And we are squished. And if it wasn't for our library staff and the town that maintained this library, everybody would be aware of it as soon as they walk in, right? But I think our town does a great job of making the library look great. I think our staff is great in terms of supporting our town and what they need to do. And sometimes I wish they just weren't so good. It would be easier to come up with that money. So again, thank you, everyone. Appreciate.
Thank you.
If you're on Zoom, I'll go right ahead. Mr. Nowacki.
Hello, everybody. My name is Daniel Nowacki, 95 Barnhill Lane, Newington. I am here for the IT presentation, but I also happen to be a user of our library. So thank you for the presentation. Great one. Two, my question, I only have one question and that's been bugging me since the beginning of the presentation. Did the committee asking for $40 million is, is a big, a big number. I wanted to know if the committee considered maybe bringing the current building to a usable state, leaving some of the programs in it and building a secondary building, future-proofing it, if you want to call it. Somewhere else, I would like to see such building maybe built in the new proposed city center as a anchor institution over there for everybody to use. I've been, between me and my, my wife and my child, we've been using the library fairly extensively and, and I would like, I definitely would like to see that happen where there is a, let's say, division for quiet programs over in the historic building and there is a new one built somewhere else for, for the more noisy ones where for mothers with kids and maker spaces and, and all the other, other things over there. Has that been a consideration for the committee? Thank you very much.
Do you have anyone else online?
It's Ms. Lyons is online.
Yeah, that's it. Yep. You can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Rose Lyons, 46 Elton Drive. Yes, I'm here and I have been for the last 10 years listening to what the library had hoped to present to this town council. Having participated in the town hall Reno committee meetings for multiple years before the building was finally built, I think you moved in almost five years ago now in July. I think it'll be five years. It's about time that the library was able to give their presentation. And I understand that over the years, they've learned things that they might not have learned had they presented it earlier, but I'm glad to see it happen. And I think they learned probably from the mistakes of the failed referendums, what you need to do in order to get the support of the residents in town. Being open, being transparent, being informative and sharing with the town what your wishes are and listening to the town as to what they would like to see as well is very important. So I am glad to see them here and this is like a banner month for me. National Welding sold, the library, Building Committee presentation. It's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the room or over Zoom that would like to speak in public participation? I don't believe any email correspondence, but no. Very good. All right. We'll move on to remarks by counselors and public participation. Any comments from counselors? Seeing none. We will move on to consideration, old business. First on the list is consider facilities naming subcommittee recommendations. Deputy Mayor Rata, would you please read that resolution?
I'd be happy to.
You've done a ton of work on this with, with the committee. So all that you guys have done.
Thank you. Resolved that the Newington Town Council hereby approves the following name changes to town facilities. One, Newington Police Department Training Facility currently known as the Dog Pound, 281 Milk Lane, Newington, Connecticut, to the Officer Alan Tancredi Police Training Facility. Two, Newington Police Department Building currently known as the Shoot House, 281 Milk Lane, Newington, Connecticut, to the Officer Jerry LaCasse Shoot House. Three, Newington Volunteer Fire Department Training Tower, 281, excuse me, Milk Lane, Newington, Connecticut, to the Chief James H. Traumer Training Tower.
Second. Shown by Deputy Mayor Rata, second by Counselor Plard. Any discussion on this? Counselor Mankey.
Yeah, I would just say I've served on this committee, I think, for nine years now. And I, I just would, for the general public, I would, would explain, explain that this is not something that's done lightly or easily. These are important decisions. I think the, the three of us, I think we spent four or five meetings to discuss these and, and these things are, are taking very seriously. These are, are three certainly qualified individuals to be named, these, these, these facilities be named. And I think a, a great honor for these three individuals, unfortunately, two are deceased and, and ones were dead today. But I, I think it's important for our history of our town and, and to recognize that their, their contributions to our, our community. But, but there's something that the committee takes, takes lightly, it doesn't take lightly. It's, it's, it's a high honor. So second, I got unmuted. So I just would congratulate them.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Plard. Thank you, Mayor. Just echoing Counselor Mankey's points, we want to send obviously our best to the families and to those who are here as well. And this honor is very well deserved and it is not taken lightly. In particularly, in particular for these three requests from our police department and our fire department, you know, these departments are microcosms in their own right of town, of our town and of culture and of history. And it's important for them to have the opportunity to chronicle their own history, for the morale of their department, for the longevity of, of preserving that history. And I'm, I'm glad that we could support that. And again, just very glad to see these names moving forward. So thank you.
Counselor Page.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, these folks and their brothers and sisters go in night and day to situations that are so dangerous and don't know if they'll return to their families and their loved ones. And this is the least we can do to recognize and honor them. So I'm, I'm so happy to do this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rata.
Yes, I, first of all, I want to thank Counselor Plard and Counselor Mankey for working together, the three of us, you know, putting time and effort and consideration. We have details of the history and the accomplishments of all three of these individuals. And Chief, it's great to see you here tonight. We, there, there aren't always opportunities in the way that we would like to honor members of our community. And I think this is one way and certainly is not taken lightly. We feel we were honored to look at these recommendations and to move them forward and And we hope that it honors Officer Tancredi and Officer LaCasse and their families. And an honor for Chief Traumer and your family, your immediate family, and the fire department family. Thanks to the police department for bringing these forward.
I also want to echo, I want to thank Deputy Mayor Rata, councillor Mankey, councillor Lord for your work on this. And one of the benefits of being a mayor is that I get to hand that off to these guys to do the work. And for me, it was a no-brainer when these came in. I think, you know, they're non-political, which is obviously a concern when doing things like this. This is non-political public service who deserve it. And it's an easy call there. So I'm happy we're doing this today.
Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Matt Rata, seconded by councillor Lord. All those in favor? Any opposed or赞成? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
We have the chief there. Do you want to come up and speak if you have a couple of minutes? We'd love to have you here for a minute.
I'm not used to this here. Been away from this for a while. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. This is the biggest honor I've ever thought I could ever accomplish. And the fire department means the world to me, and I still work on it. I was instrumental in the new radio system along with Nico. That was another big project, fifteen years. And I just, I'm lost for words. I don't know what to say. Except thank you, the biggest honor that my family will cherish. Thank you very much for each and every one of yous.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and share anything, any commissioners or chiefs? So we got the whole team here.
Lean stories, please.
Be ready to cut that mic, Scott.
Yes. I can't tell too many stories because when I was a young buck and he was the chief, I was always called up into his office on Monday night. Right, chief? And it wasn't for good things. So Chief Traumer, not much was explained why he was so deserving of what he got for the Training Tower. Chief Traumer took our training division and turned it completely around back in the eighties and nineties. And he really looked to the future and he made our training what it is today back then. Himself and a few other deputy chiefs had the vision of building the Training Tower where it is today. And on Saturdays and Sundays, correct, chief, and a couple of fire trucks and a couple of ladder trucks built that building by hand with the help of the Army SEBs. And it was all done with volunteer work. After the Training Tower was done, he had the envision of creating this program that the state of Connecticut uses to today for the way that mutual aid is done throughout the state of Connecticut. And he got together with some chiefs in the neighboring towns and created what now is Task Force Fifty-One. We were the first task force in the state of Connecticut. And like I said, after that, it was a model for the rest of the state. Yeah. Chief, I, I don't know exactly how many task forces there are in the state of Connecticut. But his model is what's used today. So he's well-deserving of this. He worked very hard as a chief. He left us in good shape when he was chief. And now we're just as proud to have his son running the helm because he had such great guidance from his father. So thank you all for doing this. It means a lot to us. And in a couple of months, when the weather warms up, we'll do an unveiling with a sign at the tower, and we're sure to invite all of you. So thank you very much on behalf of myself, Chief Traumer and the fire department. Thank you.
My dad just wants them from back here. I'm not walking. Each and every one of you are finding out that Training Tower at any given time, day, week, we can spend an hour or so out there to see what our fire department does out there. You're all invited.
I just, may I respond? I just wanted to say, I had the luxury of attending once and saw the Training Tower. The chief, for those who didn't hear the comments, was suggesting we come out and visit, and many of us have. So I can just speak from my experience, that having seen what you do for your training with real flames and, and, and real heat and danger was overwhelming. Just to see what you do, get a small taste of it in a training, a controlled training environment, I can't even fathom what it's like to go. I don't know that any of us can, unless you've done it, to go into a house with flames and poor folks who are stuck there and at risk of loss of life. So, yeah, unbelievable.
I agree. We'll definitely do that. I missed the training last time, but I would like to see that, for sure.
Just for your calendars, April thirteenth is our day drill from ten to twelve. Twenty-first is the, six-thirty till twenty-first and twenty-eighth. So for those of you who didn't get it, but still got challenge points, we appreciate it.
I'm so willing to use that challenge point.
Thank you, guys, for being here. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is revised fees for cemeteries. Councillor Tiniakas, would you please read that resolution?
Sure. Resolved that the Newington Town Council approves the cemetery fees as specified in the attached proposal fee list, effective July first, twenty-twenty-five.
Councillor Tiniakas, second by councillor Gonzalez. Any discussion on this? Councillor Mankey.
I would just thank you for, the town manager, for including the comparison of the other, the area cemeteries. It looks like our cemetery is, in some areas, in most areas, a little bit under, under under cost, under.
Little less than the average.
Under whatever. Maybe we just look, when we go next year to raise the fees, maybe just could take that into consideration. So I think we should probably be competitive, only because I'm not looking to make money off this. But I'm concerned to the future because once the cemetery is filled up, we then need to maintain that property into forever. And if we, we undersell it currently, then, you know, a hundred years from now, we're gonna have a problem maintaining it. And there's nothing I hate is the cemetery a hundred years from now that just goes to rack and ruin because we didn't have enough money to keep it maintained. But I appreciate having this, the work that went into maintaining this, producing this comparison.
Thank you, councillor Mankey. Read. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion by councillor Tiniakas, seconded by councillor Gonzalez. All those in favor? Any opposed or赞成? None, the motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to apologize. There is no, no tax refunds for this time. That should have been taken, stricken from the agenda. I'm sure mine was in it too.
All right, so no tax refunds, no minutes from previous meetings, no resignations or appointments, which moves us on to new business. First on our list is a broadband proposal. Scott Charlo is here. Thank you for hanging out and waiting this long to take this presentation, but I know we're very interested in it about it.
Just to say, while I'm preparing this, I provided that presentation to the town manager over a week ago. And obviously, I edited a few things, so it may be a little different if you look at, from the packet. I'll make sure and submit it. It's not substantial difference. It's just maybe some corrections. And then I, so just tried without that, just to note. Sorry, I thought I had a few more minutes while you.
While Scott's setting up, I'll just frame this at a very high level. I guess council, a previous council appropriated basically two-point-one million dollars from a combination of CIP funds and ARPA funds for, for this project. And that would, sort of has sort of two phases to it, or two components to it. One is to expand broadband access into parts of town that, for whatever reason, have been denied access to it. The sort of hotspots where there's sort of not that broadband access is in the residential communities along the Berlin Turnpike. And then in addition to, to have basically a fiber connection of town facilities, so that we're not as dependent on cable providers as we are, so that we're sort of more self-sufficient about our internet connection. Because there's been, obviously, a new IT director, new manager, a lot of turnover on council, we thought it would be a good idea to revisit this, this project to just sort of make sure everybody's on the same page. And because it is a technical thing, I think Scott would like some feedback on some, a handful of items to make sure we're heading in the right direction before we tee up an RFP.
That's a very good synopsis. You know, while this is loading, I did present, I have a PowerPoint. I tried to really cut it down so that we, it's a very technical concept. All the different concepts are technical. And so if there's any questions you want me to elaborate, I definitely can. Still waiting on my laptop here. But so there is a lot of information that I'll, and I also, I made a concerted effort to keep the acronyms to a minimum. So everything should be spelled out in here. Just joining the meeting. Didn't expect it to take this long. One of the other things, so as town manager Altal had said, I did, one of the things I did do is map out all the areas of town. You know, being here, being a second here, being, coming into the town two years ago, you don't often get told by your finance man, finance director, that, hey, there's this money out there for you to do something with. So I was very reluctant from the beginning to really just kind of jump in and spend that money and not, especially having four or five different town managers at that time, not coming and presenting to you and giving you a full synopsis on plan. So I have a plan together now, and that's what I'm presenting to you to review. And as, as Jonathan also said, you make sure, there we go, that's better. These are two separate projects. The first one was really meant to combine the town facilities and bring them together. And the second one really was looking at broadband and really, that was part of the ARPA project, ARPA funds. One of the big things about ARPA was to try to expand broadband to citizens. So that's what we're trying to do here. So let me just present now. Sorry for the delay. There we go. So there's the, there we go. So the two projects there, town network infrastructure upgrade and the public broadband project. Town network infrastructure is planned to be a dark fiber ring to the core facilities, which I'll get into more. This is just meant to be the broad synopsis. And then fiber, fiber point-to-point to other town facilities. Again, there'll be more collaboration on that. And then the broadband project is really looking at low-latency, high-band breadth broadband, really fiber connections to the premise, or FTTH, fiber to the household. So these are the two projects. You had five hundred ninety-six from CIP for the town network infrastructure, and then the one-point-five million from ARPA. And as part of that, there are grants available. The state of Connecticut is actually very active in trying to promote broadband initiatives. And so there's these three existing programs. I won't get into them too much now unless you'd like me to. These are actually hyperlinks. So if you got the PDF presentation, you can click on them. You can learn more about the programs. Or if you have questions later, I can discuss them. But there are initiatives within the state to try to encourage and provide additional funding. I've had conversations with the Connecticut DEEP and OPM about some of these and trying to, looking at our availability. And so these programs are out there. So what is the town's existing solution? We do have town-owned fiber that goes to the senior disabled seven, center, the library, the plant, the police department, transportation, the transportation garage down the street. And we recently brought it out to Mill Pond Park. Our other facilities, though, are served with cable-based internet and enterprise firewall. That's Parks and Grounds, firehouses, and the highway campus. Now all the buildings are named. We have actually names for them, so it'll be exciting. So what we're proposing is really having fiber to all these sites. And that's really what that five hundred ninety-six was meant for. I can get into all the benefits there. There's many. It's pretty well-understood. But the big thing here is that it really allows us to do what we need to do. There's a lot of projects that are really hinged on this, including some, expanding our radio project to the emergency operations center. Really, I could give you a litany of them. I was just talking to Chief Traumer about phones and telephony at some of the firehouses. These sorts of connections allow us to do whatever we want to do with respect to network and communications. You have a question already?
Yeah, I do. Sorry. This is maybe for, for dummies, but for fiber means you're actually gonna run a cord from, from here to the highway department.
Yeah. So, you know, like, so fiberglass is really what we're talking about, fiber. So in fiberglass, you know, you think about fiberglass car. Essentially, the fiberglass itself can transmit light.
Right.
And that light allows us to transmit data. And what we do, we call it dark fiber. I'm sorry, I should probably should talk about it. It's just unlit. But then what we do is we take two switches and we put a little transceiver on it, which sends light down that, and we can transmit-receive. And there's all sorts of technologies that you can do crazy things with it. But essentially, you can transmit data at the speed of light. And it allows you, you know, whereas copper can degrade and have all these other issues, you don't have that with fiber. A lot of times with fiber, you get, when you invest and put that infrastructure in place, it's a thirty-to-fifty-year proposition. You don't get that with copper. Copper's prone to, like, lightning strikes. We have problems at Parks and Grounds. The reason why we had to do our fibers, we had a lightning strike, and it literally blew our copper lines out. So when I first started here, it was a problem, and we addressed it by bringing fiber and really revamping all that infrastructure. That's within the campus, not outside. So I'm sorry, I should have.
But this would be, this would be a wire going from here to Company One. But we would own, that would go to Company One, right?
So that's, that's part of, if you, if you, you're skipping ahead a little bit, but that's fine. The original proposition was to build it ourselves.
Okay.
What I would propose is that that's unnecessary. And the reason why I'm even coming here to talk to you is that there's some benefit by us not building ourselves. If we build it ourselves, it's only for us. Like, it's ours. So we're not gonna expand broadband to these areas. And what I'm trying to say is there should be more of a public, public-private partnership where we invest, we go out to bid. And again, I'm kind of, maybe I'm making this even simpler. I don't have to go through all my slides. We go out to bid with this money, and the fiber that we build, or is built for us, is also benefiting the community.
Okay.
So these areas like firehouses and parks that are out.
Become hubs.
Yes. Essentially, or, you know, now these companies have a reason to expand, if they're fiber and they have a paying customer, which would be us. And, you know, you're providing that sort of framework for them. So I just basically gave my whole presentation. I just basically gave my whole presentation. Quick, I grasp. You got it. And again, the slides are there so you can review them, so I'll just go through. So again. You can. There's flexible lease content duration. Again, I'm proposing being managed by a vendor and then we provide the infrastructure. So I want I just want dark fiber. A lot of times, some of these companies say, no, I need to manage it ourselves. We can't do it. Then you pay extra. You know, you see that extra bill on your phone bill where it's $15 for the equipment. I don't want any of that. I want to put my own equipment in and then we'll manage it ourselves. One of the things too. It's not necessarily a savings, but now we don't need those coax modems, that old infrastructure anymore. So there's about a $15,000 savings in general. That kind of come is kind of gets built into this. Like if you go to a managed. Solution like that. These are all the sites. Again, I'm not going to go through them all. One of the big things to look at the sites. The reason I put it in bold in the bottom is our core sites all have generator power. So. You you don't. Obviously, that's one of the big things. You want it to be able to be resilient. These are non core sites. You can see we have town sites, the the radio communications tower, transfer station. Firehouses, I I talked to the to fire department about it and lit me up different parks. Why are parks in here? Main thing here is we have a lot of problems with. And we've talked to Parks and Rec about people dumping on the parks. He's also, there was a longstanding project to put Wi-Fi at all these parks. So it gives us the ability to put cameras and do other infrastructure upgrades at these parks. So those are there. And these are sites that you can we can as a group, including you. Coming to the table are ones that we consider maybe in the future. So those are the sort of sites and to note here, I've also been talking to the public schools. Their their lease agreement is a little bit different, so this wouldn't necessarily be part, you know, of this initial push. But it's something we can consider in the in the future. I already see hands. Was that just for the future? So then the public broadband project, this is just a definition. What is broadband? Right? So the FCC kind of got their their arm tied behind their back to really push to 100 meg down 20 meg up. And and but the Connecticut is really looking at this gigabit. Many of her gigabit communities is a big term that's been going on for at least 10. At least the last 12 years. Also, the Connecticut Public Act 2159 established gig down and 100 meg up. I don't think it's really that. Important. I think what's more important is having a quality connection than having a you can have a big pipe. So it's like a big highway, but if it it's like the difference between the Berlin Turnpike and going on on like 84. Right? There's less exits you have, there're less. The less congestion is less traffic, you know, so you want a good connection, right? So. You know, there's a it's an easy number to hit at, but it's not necessarily the best metric is what I'm trying to say. So you guys probably know the wireline providers here are Cox Frontier and GoNet Speed. And this is the slide. So this is this is actually a map. From the FCC National Broadband Map, they tried to map out again, the federal government's asking down funds to the state. So in order to really do that for these projects, you have to know where the problems are. So these are really the haves and haves nots. The green dots are people who have fiber optic internet access. The red dots are people who don't. Alright, so this is where there's some funding available from the feds that kind of has passed through grants. And this is just a little corner and I'll get into this more. What have other towns done? New Britain did a matching. They went out to bid and they worked with GoNet Speed to to provide fiber service to 100% of their residents. They completed this project in May of 2024, so it was about a two year build. East Hartford, there was an open RFP years ago. Through New Haven and SciFi was a vendor that. That was one of the vendors that won, but that project. Really only took hold in East Hartford and 10 years later, the project finally died. It really was not a. A success story, so. And then Hartford right now is really using. Fiber connections and Wi-Fi to get that endpoint, so they have Wi-Fi endpoints on. Telephone poles that then are able to service the community. It's not ideal. You don't get that low low latency, high. Bandwidth connection, but it is something they're providing to their 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 residents, and I just wanted to bring it up as as another model. So what are we proposing? I I've I've present, I've developed a draft RFP to really do what I discussed, really do credit. Go out and get that 100% build and and potentially phase it in. I'm really coming to here really to get some more input and see what you guys think. And. So that's really what I'm here presenting. So this map is really something that I put together. The the pink areas, I don't know if you can see it or not. The pink areas are areas of town that are not serviced by fiber providers at all. The dots on the map are really the sites that those those that spreadsheets, the three spreadsheets together. The core sites are in green. Really, the firehouses and and our core town sites, point to point sets are the parks. The managed fiber are existing. Camera solutions to the police department, which would eventually be molded into this model. And then the red ones are the potentials sites, future sites, schools and what have you. So. This is a live map. This is really what I've used to try to, you know, put this all together. And the reality is that that's the gist of the presentation. Again, just trying to keep it short and sweet. So I'm open to questions or a few. New comments or.
Yes, both have questions. Counselor Page.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to join the questions for dummies with two questions. I just have two. One is when this is. Done, what will be remaining that's pink or will will it be all?
That's a really good question. If if I have my druthers and I say the whole town would be 100% covered. And that would include also businesses. That's not to say there isn't challenges. One of the big challenges condo complexes is really school. So like. One of the real challenges for the and I hate to speak for these vendors, but. Coming into what they call MDU or multi dwelling unit. There's a lot of existing infrastructure. Some of these complexes were built years ago. Sometimes they have sole provider agreements with like just the cable provider. So there's all these different sort of we have to deal with the condo associations. There's build. Sometimes they gotta dig. Trench. Sometimes there's bedrock, so there's a lot of things that have to happen. And that's partially the reason why they haven't built in there. Current weight. But. What I'd like to say is through this partnership, we would get 100% of the town, including the commercial industries. Businesses obviously have a problem too, and and one of the reasons. My previous job, we really were pushing to to do something similar. Was really for the business side. We had businesses that were saying, hey, I'm paying thousands of dollars a month for this fiber internet and. There's these other things that are available. And so GoNet Speed starts building into Bloomfield as well as where I previously work. So these are. Existing problems, not only for our residents, but also for businesses and and our enterprises.
My second last question is, again, help me understand this at the level of a five year old. When there are multi.
We're younger.
When when you're when there are multi. Million or billion dollar companies making profits on providing these services. Just help me understand how. Federal and state and local taxes. From all of us. Go into building these structures and I. I support this, but I I'm trying to understand how we socialize the expenses while privatize the profits for the corporations and. And just help me understand that. It wouldn't. In other words, if if they're making profit off of us paying our monthly fees. Wouldn't they be building this or am I still?
I think that's a very good question. It's something I struggle with as well. That being said, I think they. Again, it goes back to the cost, so. If you take one neighborhood and it costs, let's say $100,000 to build into that neighborhood, but there's only 20 houses. Right? And. I honestly, it's it's a. It's a cost benefit thing. So if we can invest, we can encourage them to, again, this goes back to my whole plan of encouraging. We have our own sites that we need connectivity to. But irrespective, we just take it in a vacuum like, hey, there's these folks out here that really want internet. I think it's really hard. For an individual to encourage a large company. Say a frontier or a GoNet Speed to to develop into their neighborhood because of all the costs. Because a lot of the time, a lot of the times, a lot of these pink areas up here. Are there because there's underground infrastructure. So when you have a telephone pole, you can just strap to it and it's a lot easier, right? Everyone's you got your laterals out to the houses. When you have everything underground, although we all probably think it's better because we're in New England and there's storms and everything else. It's also a lot harder and sometimes these conduits are dedicated to only one provider, so they can't actually go in, so. It it, you know. So sometimes these things are not so. I think originally when this was conceived on the federal level, they're thinking of people who are disadvantaged or underserved. Folks that just can't pay for internet, which is obviously a big component of this. And we saw this in COVID where we were providing wireless access points through the libraries to give access that way. In in this case, we're underserved because of the existing infrastructure, the bedrock, the the conduit's underground. And to get back not to sidestep the original question. I struggled with, hey, we're we're supplementing these folks to build into these neighborhoods. But we're also providing a competitive landscape where now these companies can compete against each other. Where right now, a lot of times, there's only one provider in a neighborhood. They can charge whatever they want. They're they're providing a subpar sort of experience. And. So. I think we're. Trying to provide a competitive landscape.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks. Thank you. I just want to real quick before we move on, acknowledge there's someone online with their hand up. Mr. Noacki, there there will be an opportunity for public participation later on in the meeting, so I don't want you to think we're ignoring it. Counselor Tenias.
Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. I just got fiber and I love it, so I think this is a great idea for the town. Just. Expanding on this because I I don't know kind of like the. The inner workings of how like the town will communicate with whatever service provider they use. So if we get if we get the whole town. Like with fiber access. Have you seen in other areas like where that provider becomes kind of like. The preferred provider in the area where they like will have like some sort of discount rate for the town itself, or is it just kind of like we have fiber? Any third party can utilize that fiber?
So there's actually different models. I don't want to get, I mean, I could, we could go down that road. There was a model that was proposed by Macri Capital. It was a company out of Australia that was trying to come into Connecticut. And everything was, hey, we're going to build it everywhere. And then these different providers, the Cox's Comcast. They can just ride on our fiber, so you don't have to build it once. I love the concept. It just never happened. So you know, it's. It it's out there, you know. But what's happening, what's really happening in landscapes, everyone's building fiber, like even the firehouse one. There is Crown Castle fiber through the state. State brought it in already. But in in it's on state contract, but it's also very expensive. So even though it's existing, it's also very expensive to use. It's one of the ones I would hope they would come to the if we have an RFP process, they come in and they would bid on it as well. You know, so it's. It's. There's different models out there. We can look into them. And hopefully through the RFP process, we'll have the ability to to really take a deeper dive into it. I don't know if I totally answered your.
Yeah, no, no, I I think of the gist of it. Other than that, like, so if we're able to get all of our facilities on like the same fiber network. Are what what are the possibilities of us having like? You know, town hotspots and stuff like that. Is it is it easier to implement something like that if we're all?
What do you define hotspot?
Like you like, say, I go down to the downtown area and then there's just like a general public Newington.
So that's like a layer on top. Like, so we're just, this is the pyramid, right? We were building the infrastructure so we can do things like that. All those different parks, really the plan is to put wireless access points out there. Is the 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 Fire Museum already has wireless. And, you know, we still need to have that conversation. But one of the other locations is is the Market Street. Parking, you know, that the pavilion in the back. And so I was thinking that we'd be able to do something there as well. There's already lighting controllers that are there. There's other infrastructure. So again, this is not just, you know, wireless and and security. It's, you know, all the other different pieces that are. Part of managing a facility, so. Yes.
Cool. I hope it works out. That's awesome.
Counselor Nagel.
Thank you. I'll start off by saying this isn't my area of expertise. But I I was specific, I was noticing on the list that you listed parks, town facilities and whatever that have been or will be. Connected if this if this all goes through. But I did notice the Deming Farm was left off it. I don't know why. And are there other? Facilities or town owned buildings that you've decided or that it it can't be included?
Well, it could be included. This is the this is why I bring this to you, that if you feel, I could tell you right now that we don't have any sort of infrastructure at the Deming Farm. That doesn't mean we couldn't. I'm also would need to talk to. The facilities. I'm not sure what we do to manage at Deming Farm. But again, this is we'll we can have a conversation. This is not meant to be like a fixed list. What I can tell you is those core sites and the secondary sites, especially the core sites, this is an existing really important need. And when I pass this through the staff in my department. They were like, hey, this is great, but. You know, these are things we need like right away. I don't want the the town public broadband piece to slow down, but we need something, you know. Sooner, like even the EOC, this is a very. Prescient need that it's not something that I can wait another year for. So, you know, there is a lot of urgency, which is why I come even to you now to kind of. Keep this moving and and moving forward or or moving in the direction you you feel. You know, is is proper, but so I wouldn't say like. I I don't think that this is a fixed list. I think it's going out to an RFP to then get a framework that we can work with. And and look at the different sites. And maybe, you know, like you guys feel strongly that Deming Farm is. Or any of these sites are important, then we would work with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, the case is Deming Young, there there's no computers there and I don't know that there is a.
I knew there probably probably was a reason, but I just noticed out of parks, that was the one not there. And also want to know whether this was what's presented here. This is it. This is what we're doing. Or if it's a work in progress that indeed if future funds come, you can expand beyond that point. Because I know people and some people in town will say, well, how come you chose that? We didn't choose this. Be it fair or not.
I can justify the core sites. I can justify very easily. The the secondary sites, I think I could justify very easily. Almost all of them. But. So I would say that it's probably both. It's something that I've worked really hard on and I believe is ready to go. There's also something that you can, there's still some discussion to be had. I'd be happy to come back at the next meeting for future discussion. That being said. Like I said, there's this is a part of this which we really kind of need to push, move along. And I'm committed to to do that, so whatever it takes to. You know, whatever you you feel is the right way to go. But I again, this the next step would be an RFP. And we'd get proposals from the different providers and different vendors and maybe someone comes out of the woodwork. I know a company already contacted me that I didn't even know really worked in Connecticut, so. And once it's public, things happen, right? So. You know, who knows, you know?
Once the the broadband is put in into the locations. That have been defined here. Does that stay there? In other words, does it go away at some point if not used? Or is it whatever the use is, public or private? It's it's there for use on a permanent basis? Or are there additional costs that come from changing it or?
At the RFP process level, but that being said, yes, with a managed. Dark fiber solution like I'm talking about, we don't own, it would be a monthly fee. Per site. But it would only go away if we say, hey, we don't really use that or that, you know, this isn't really.
So this isn't something that goes into a private business, let's say, in the Berlin Turnpike and then suddenly they decide not to move out or. Something happens to the building.
So that's so there's two different things. Like we go up to this map, right? So you can see. Actually, the Berlin Turnpike, you can see is not is this is the Berlin Turnpike. Running to there. You can see it's there's lots of pink around there, so a lot of those businesses don't have access to fiber at all currently. But you could also see we have some sites here that would be our sites, so. You know, and that's why I'm trying to merge these two projects together. Is I'm saying like as we as they build fiber to the town sites. They're also bringing fiber out in these neighborhoods that don't have fiber. So conceivably, it it would make sense to them. If and again, while we're combining these two to provide those that service to those communities as they go in.
Would it be would it be provided at a charge to them?
Yes, it would be a charge. So like. You know, Frontier has a as a deal, it's like $40 a month. I don't know what service.
I had GoNet.
GoNet Speed, similar, you know, and sometimes they provide wireless access points for you. It's part of their bundle. Again, I'm not a. I'm not a businessman. I'm I'm, you know, I am what I am, so. But and honestly. Here's Scott. You know, during the RFP process, there would be part of that solution, but it would be market conditions, you know, um, and again, that's why the the whole goal here is to provide more than one provider in a neighborhood. So he, oh, I have Cox and that's all I can do, and it doesn't matter if it's, it's not what I want or it isn't working for me, that's all I can do and and you know.
So in the, in the long range of things, doing what we just talked about could provide revenue for the town.
No, um, actually, this is not a revenue generating model, I I would say if we tried to create, so this is some so this is a different model, right? And a different model be we build it ourselves and we become an ISP ourselves. And if you, there, this unfortunately was litigated to some, and, um. How far I wanna go down this road, but it this, there, it was litigated, it was pushed, there was a period where it said towns couldn't do this. And then it turns out that you kind of can, there are, um, Norwich Public Utilities is an example of a community that is doing some component of being an ISP themselves, but they already had, they already provide their own electricity. So they already had kind of that utility framework set up. You know, I've even, you know, you know, I don't wanna brainstorm out loud, but like, the M D C is a utility, right? It would, they have that framework, they can build people already. And even that Macri model I talked about before, they wanted the towns to include a charge on everyone's tax bill, I'm not proposing that. They were saying, hey, no, you guys, we're gonna provide internet to everyone in town, but we're gonna make the town include that as an additional twenty five dollar charge on everyone's tax bill. Cause everyone gets internet, right? So I'm not proposing that we own it ourselves and then, you know, do that. Again, I don't know what during the RFP process, I I can imagine, you know.
But I, I do know where you're going, I would have been satisfied with the yes or no, but I do understand what you're, what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to.
No, 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 thank you for all the additional information, but as I said, my, we're getting out of my sphere, so. Uh, the question wasn't to uh, to dig into something that we didn't need, didn't need to dig into or to changing whatever your plan happened to be. So thank you.
Councilor Drago.
Oh, yes, Scott, you kind of lost me that first slide. Seriously, um, but so I don't even know if the questions I'm asking makes sense, so. Um, but you were talking initially about you had, or we had the option, or there was the possibility of managing the network, but you, but you instead, it's gonna be managed by the vendor. Now for the for the core facilities, for the core ring, the dark.
So the the vendor would be responsible for providing us the fiber, period. And then we would be responsible for putting those little lights on the other sides, really lighting that fiber up and using it for our purposes. And the other benefit of that is we can put whatever speed transceiver we want, so we could, if we're saying, hey, we really need a faster you know, highway to be built, then we can just, we switch out the transceiver and we're done, we don't have to go back to the provider and say, hey, switch out all the equipment. It it's also cheaper to maintain on our end, because now it's our equipment. We're not paying extra for it, we're not paying that extra, you know, fifteen dollars in your cable bill for the box that you have in your basement. It's it's our equipment, so it's kind of both, so the vendor will manage that fiber for us. In the sense that if, you know, if a car goes into the telephone pole and it falls down, they're not calling me. We're calling the vendor to go out and fix it, and they have the make ready and they have all the permits and they can deal with Tura and we don't have to. That's, so that's the model is they own the fiber, we lease it, but it's we manage and they manage it, but we light it. That is, that's.
So how does that impact security in terms of particularly for the core or town facilities? By by not, by us leasing it and, you know, them kind of managing it sort of, it, is it more of a security risk or not? Are this a security?
The great thing about fiber is it's very hard to really break into. So with copper lines, you actually can listen in, even on the outside. You can't do that with fiber, so even like the FBI and their headquarters, they have fiber to the to the actual PCs because it's not something that leaks any sort of the data outside of it. So a cop, fiber up on a pole. There are ways to to do it, but you, it's it's not, I don't, is that between by security, like, like a network security? Or you mean like physical security?
No, on network facility in terms of like police and fire.
It's it's the most secure way to provide, at least that I'm aware of, provide um, network connectivity between sites.
Okay, um, and then also you mentioned um, about the B O E possibly, and it, cause there was, um. I don't think we've talked about it a lot in this council, but shared services, and there always seemed to be a little bit of a reluctance.
So we already do some of this already, like when we build out to the Board of Ed Transportation, we have facilities in there. We have the facilities department in there. And uh, so we we partnered with the Board of Ed to build it out to that site. As you know, the Board of Ed is in here on the third floor and we share the data center, so the reality is all that sort of fiber infrastructure comes into the same place. So it wouldn't be.
So it's, you you feel that they'd be amenable at some point to.
There'd be discussions to be had, but we work together already and I don't, you know, I don't, you know, if if there's some way that we can help them or they can help us, I'm sure that that would be agreeable.
Um, another, there are two, what about, um. Would it be the state or the town if we wanted to get something by the fast track stations? Cause it would seem to me that that might be places where there's public, there's there's use, there's.
Yeah, I mean, um.
You're in that gray area already.
Yeah, I I could look at that for you and get back, like, I, you know, I think, I think we do have sites kind of near there already, but I I um. I would have to look at each individual location, um, like Firehouse Three is near the fast track station, I don't know, I I could, I could look and I'll make sure that we get you some information about that.
And then just the last thing, um, for the people who are green now. Who paid, okay, the the pinks are gonna be paid for by the grant.
So we're trying to encourage, we're trying to, what this map was really trying to do is say, these are the, this is where the problem is, right? And and um, and that's what I was struggling with, you know, over the last, you know, since I started working on this is, you know, what is the problem? Um, so the idea here is to encourage, these are areas of town that don't have any options at all. So the idea was to to encourage um, growth in those areas, in those pink areas, um.
So who paid for the greens?
Well, really, I think that it's like getting the low hanging fruit. No, I would say the companies did as an investment. Um, and then again, it's it's the low hanging fruit, this is, this is where it was economically viable for them. And if you look, the green, if you you can barely see it, this is the FCC map in the background, you can see the the green areas are very dense. So they're saying, hey, I can build in this area and I'm gonna have access to hundreds of consumers. Sometimes you go like, oh, I have to build two miles down a road, but there's only one house. You know, like, it's so it's rural, those rural areas that up, that full upper part of Connecticut where it's really rural and there's one house, they have the same, they have a different problem, right? We have densely settled areas that have underground infrastructure that you really, there should be that sort of model where it's worth worth for these companies to build in, but they can't because it's so expensive, or they don't, is really the better, what better answer? Cause it's so expensive for them to build in and then, you know, you're charging someone fifty dollars a month. How long before I get my hundred thousand dollars back? It's, you know, that's that's their.
And this is all through the grant paid for.
This is already, this is already allocated funds, you know, once we get the RFP back, you know, I I don't wanna say, hey, it's gonna be a done deal after. You know, maybe we look at phasing it in, maybe look at a different areas of town, again, trying to divide it up, but try to combine it together. Um, again, there's two different projects here. You know, there there may, there will be additional discussion, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Plod.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I may be the youngest, but I'm about as clueless as everybody else up here about this kind of stuff. Um, so you can file, feel welcome to file these questions under the dummy questions area if they are dumb. Um, but uh, I have started to learn a little bit more because I'm moving to an area of town where there is a major uh, need for this kind of infrastructure. Um, and uh, it does make a big difference, not just for residents, but for businesses too, in our commercial areas. If they don't have access to that, a lot of them are choosing not to move to those areas if they have a wifi dependent business of some kind. Uh, as most businesses are these days, so um, I think this is really important. A couple of quick questions, just first, I guess for residents, particularly in those areas without much access right now, those pink areas on the map. I look at in particular around the Berlin Turnpike, a lot of those, um, a lot of that town infrastructure, those hubs that could then reach out beyond to expand access to other areas, they're disproportionately on the other side of the turnpike, uh, towards the center of town, et cetera, they're very concentrated. What does that look like for, it it could be the Berlin Turnpike, it could be the northwest corner of town, those areas of town without uh, a lot of that concentration of those hubs, what does that actual deployment look like? How long does that take, uh, et cetera?
Alright, so that's, there's a lot of different questions in there, how, I'll I'll approach the last question first, how long does it take? Um, it really depends on the infrastructure and again, going through the RFP process. Um, uh, generally speaking, you have to get, whenever you put something on a pole, you gotta get permits through um, sole pole administrator. That can be an arduous process, we've had some real big problems with that internally as well. But a lot of these companies, they have their own agreements, so they're able to make ready and connect to the pole within like sixty days. So some of this work can be done relatively quickly. Um, sometimes you see all these sites, they may have some infrastructure up there in other ways and they're able to essentially splice those wires together for the the that together and and so it's really depending on how, what kind of infrastructure that particular vendor has in the area already, um, how long it will take. Um, and again, I agree with you that this is something, it's a have and have not. And if I was someone, if I was a business and I'm locating and I find out all I can have is a, is a bad internet service. You know, maybe I'll look somewhere else, I look at, you know, again, New Britain has a hundred percent of their community with fiber, that.
I guess one other question, if I may, it's just, um, you talked a little bit about some, and I know you chatted about it with Councilor Petreco, but uh, a around uh, the schools and there you mentioned that there may be some differences in their lease agreement, I don't know if you feel comfortable speaking to that a little bit more.
I I I'm not an expert on it, right? But I I just know, you know, in emailing back and forth, they um, they have, they have more of. So they use E rate originally, and I think that created a different contract vehicle. And so it's just a little, it's a little bit different of a proposition, this, the towns, E rate is a way to reimburse for some of those school expenses and education. The town has never been E rate, in fact, it used to be that we couldn't even use, you know, that connection right there because that was E rated and the town's not allowed to connect to that. So it's a, it's just they have a different framework. Not to say that that, something that can't be addressed going down, and that's what my point is, it's a potential future thing, but there's a lot of discussions that need to happen before that, is it, is really a possibility.
Thank you, Scott.
Uh, Councilor Manki.
So I'm gonna go get a fourth grader class, show me what this is all about, I took notes, so explain this to me tomorrow. Um, just cook, so so we go into this project, everybody in the pink would have a better chance of getting internet.
That's the plan.
That's the plan, everybody in the gray on my screen, the gray would, there'd be no change.
Potentially, because again, this is, yeah.
Could be, cause the gray now has, I'm I'm taking it, if my house is in the gray, I have now have opportunity to have internet from three or four different carriers because they just string another wire down the pole and probably in front of my house goes a pole for Cox Cable Frontier and going at speed or whatever you have, going at speed, right? So there's probably three cables that go, three fiber cables that go through my neighborhood. And I just have to call up and get a new cable and they throw in a cable in into my house.
That would be the hope is that, not, but I I would hope that some of these gray areas, some of these gray areas have Frontier only, or maybe Frontier and Cox. Some of these gray areas have Go Net Speed and maybe Cox. So, you know, I tried to make this map as a, as an, as a vendor agnostic as possible. So there's a potential that some of these gray areas now have three vendors, like now they have Go Net Speed Frontier and Cox, which would be even better, right? Cause now.
In the summer, they all come, they all go up down the street, I think, they come one after another, so they're trying to sell me something, so, you know, even even the one I already have could sell me.
I think honestly, and and again, I, Go Net Speed was the newcomer.
Right.
And they really disrupted the space, and then Frontier got an influx of cash and they weren't really doing fiber. And now Frontier is available, so it's really been a benefit, you can see that mark, the market really working the way it should. So this is just encouraging them to come in here and, you know, let that fight happen, you know?
So my, my other concern is if if we build a hub someplace in some neighborhood and 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 then it it, the neighborhood is serviced or the street is serviced by underground cable that that maybe is covered by X, Y, and Z companies. And they say, yeah, it's great, I own the cable, but I'm not gonna let you connect to it, that doesn't help that neighborhood, any, it doesn't. Because they still own the cable and it's still underground, and it's still a hundred houses on that street or.
It is a hypothetical, let me just interject, so if it's, if, let's say it's a town right away, right? Is it, it could be a private road, it could be a town ro- road right away. That's to say, okay, they won't let us put in the conduit, but doesn't mean I can't trench my own. Doesn't, you know, they could potentially, there's other ways, they can dig their own trench, they can put their own conduit in. They, there's, there's micro trenching, which is a machine that essentially.
Right, but there was always, already, it it's.
So there's other options.
There was already, that was already feasible, the company would have already done that to to get their their kind, their 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 cable up.
It's the, it's the cost, right? So I I think it's, I think that, what I understand the issue is they could go through all that and then find out that they got one person on the street that signed up and everyone else is like, oh, no, I'm happy with.
With whoever they.
Whatever I have, and I, or I don't wanna do it, or you're like my mom, she's like, so afraid of changing. You know, like, I try to encourage her, I can't get her to change, you know, like, so it's really. You know, if you didn't trust me, what what?
I I think it's a good, I think it's it it to get more cable to the to the, the pink is not covered, I think it's it's a good exit, I think, and to get us, the town sites more covered, I think it's a good exercise, I think, it's a good use of the funds, the funds are already allocated, I think it's a great project. I'm just, you know, not sure it's gonna cover everybody and I don't want everybody to think that's gonna, it's gonna help everybody, everybody's gonna see a de- decrease in their cable bills or their their internet, it's not gonna cover, it's not gonna help people in in the gray areas, it's gonna help those in the pink.
I I share your concern and that's why going out to bed, it gives you the opportunity to review what people propose. Um, the the New Britain model, um, Go Net Speed showed up with a fifty fifty match. So we have two million and they throw in two mil, you know, how far does that get? You know, I, you know, I I don't know, the models are out there, it's open, open, it's a, it's public information.
Yeah, I just don't want the general public to think, okay, we're gonna do this project and now now my my internet bill is gonna go down because my internet bill is probably not gonna get affected because I already have and I'm already in the gray area.
I would hope that with, the way it's supposed to work is that as you have more people sign up, that the 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 number is supposed to go down. And, um. That is. Whether that actually works, um, I do think competition is going to drive the cost down, I think that's shown. I think that's what's been proven, if you look at the adjacent communities, and I live in West Hartford, it's what happened in West Hartford. You know, Frontier was not building fiber in my neighborhood and then Go Net Speed, and like you said, all of a sudden I'm getting brochures from Frontier. So now I have three providers and the and the price is staying the same. Not going up.
Councilor Tenaki, you got it?
Uh, yeah, so at this point, um, you said that you had, you've been working on the RFP, is it, and this might be for uh, our town manager, is it out of, is that a point where the draft is good to be presented to us for our next meeting?
Yeah, I would think that would probably be logical next step, this is council approved RFP and go from there.
Cool.
It's all, and again, we're just, the whole, one of the points of this was just to get feedback from you all to make sure you're on board, so I don't come up with an RFP and go like, what is this? That's the.
We'll all bring a fourth grader with us, so.
Right, can we have a lesson or something, the office hours?
Um, I, you know, I, this, this issue was actually raised, brought to my attention by Mr. Nowacki, um, almost two years ago, prior to being elected. So I, you know, I, like everyone else, had no idea necessarily what all that meant, but I have experience from you know, when I first moved to Newington, I lived in one of those pink areas, and when I bought my house, it's in a gray area, so I was able to relate to, you know, the people. As you pointed out, those pink areas, that's not rural, that's not, you know, open space farmland, that's densely. As you pointed out, those pink areas, that's not rural, that's not, you know, open space farmland, that's densely populated areas. And there's, there's hundreds of residents, thousands of residents who aren't benefiting from this, that could. And I think there's a, a benefit to the community and I, I, I think this is great and I'd, I'd like to see it move forward because I think it makes us more attractive. People are working from home more often now, I mean, if they're gonna buy a house and they're working from home, they're not gonna buy a house in an area that doesn't have, you know, broadband, high speed internet. They're gonna wanna, they want that, they need that. So I think it's, you know, and then our neighbors are doing it and. I don't know whether still Rocky Hill in West Hartford, if they're a hundred percent, but if they're not, I'd like to keep them to that, if you can, um, make us more attractive in the region. So I really, really appreciate you bringing this forward and, um, I, no less, I feel like I did before, which I think is a good thing, because it means you explained it. Um, and I'm looking forward to hear about the RFP next time, for sure.
Any other questions or counseling, Councilman?
You're good to go, man. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, next on the agenda is item B, a SHIPO grant resolution for historical resources inventory. I believe you touched on this a little bit at the last meeting, Jonathan?
Uh, well, just announced that we, we received a twenty thousand dollar grant from SHIPO. So as a reminder, we talked about demolition delay ordinance back in October, November. Um, you know, I think the, the thing that we got stuck on was what criteria would we use, which properties would that apply to? Um, Paul, uh, proactively wrote this grant and got the, the twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we haven't done an historic resource inventory update in Newington since nineteen seventy nine. So with this money, as well as with a fifteen thousand dollar local match, which will be paid from the CIP local match fund. Uh, we could go out for an RFP to find a vendor to update that, that resource inventory for us, so that we could be in a position to resurrect that demolition delay ordinance. Um, so, um, you know, just the, the resolution is pretty straightforward, technically authorizes me to, to, to sign stuff. And, and, but I think the, the key thing is it would have a fifteen thousand dollar match with it. Um, just make you work.
Yeah, I think this is great, I'm excited about it. Any questions from councilors on this? I mean, we're, we're, we're not voting tonight, the next meeting. But any other questions? Something we've talked about for a while.
Just to thank you to Paul.
Yeah, I know, yeah, Paul knocked it out of the park.
I, I.
I pulled it off the hook and it's hanging. Yeah, I told him to like, cause I thought the grant would be really simple to write, so I said, let's just do it yourself instead of saying it to Sonia. And then he gave me this like twenty page book report and I was like, alright, yeah, yeah.
So it's simple with somebody else?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. I learned my lesson, I'm gonna make him do that.
So what was he?
See, I told you, Zizi.
Very good. All right, thank you, Jonathan. Uh, moving along now to, uh, item C, resolution for John Wallace Middle School Project. Actually, you're up, Lauren.
Thanks for hanging out.
Full house tonight?
Yeah, yeah. It's a party, yeah.
So I'm back with the next step in the Wallace project. So we came to you last month and asked you to approve. Uh, the ninety percent construction plans, cost estimates, so they could go to the state PCR meeting. That meeting was held on February thirteenth and there actually was a follow-up PCR meeting this morning. There are still two barely, we're hoping, um, easy fix outstanding items that should be completed by the end of the week. So now the next step in order to continue with the state grant process is for you all to approve sending the project out to bid. Um, and that is pending approval of the state PCR review and the Board of Education. So the Board of Ed is scheduled to meet tomorrow and take action on this tomorrow, also pending the state approval, which we should have by the end of the week.
Uh, questions from councilors? Councilor Plod.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Lauren. I'm just wondering, you mentioned this at, uh, our last meeting, you asked the same question, but just for the public certification. If you could just go over again, the urgency and why the, the interest in waiving tonight?
Sure, so the waiver is being requested again this evening just because of this tight, tight timeline that we're on. In order for the project construction to begin at the end of this current school year.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions from councilors on this? Um, it seems reasonable, um, to push it along through. Um, uh, Councilor Plod, would you read the resolution?
Sure.
Resolve that the Newington Town Council, in accordance with section fourteen of the Town Council Rules of Procedure, adopted April ninth, twenty twenty four. Hereby moves to allow action on agenda item eleven C to approve authorizing the bid process of the ninety percent plus construction drawing plans. Specifications and cost estimates for renovations at John Wallace Middle School Building Project. Uh, parentheses zero nine four dash zero one one two A, close parentheses. Contingent upon approval of the Board of Education and final state PCR. And authorizing Town Manager Jonathan Altshul or his successor to sign all necessary bid documents and contracts for this project.
Second. Yeah. Um, because we're waiving the rules, um, I'm gonna open it up right now for public participation, um, on this agenda item. So if you're in the room or, um, over Zoom, would like to speak in public participation related to waiving the rules, uh, please feel free to do so now. All right, seeing none. Uh, we had a motion by Councilor Plod, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rada. Um, any discussion? Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Councilor Plod, would you read the next one, please?
Sure.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the John Wallace Middle School Building Project Committee at their meeting of February twentieth, twenty twenty five. The Newington Town Council hereby approves authorizing the bid process of the ninety percent plus construction drawing plans. Specifications and cost estimates for renovations at John Wallace Middle School Building Project. Parenthesis zero nine four dash zero one one two A, close parentheses. Contingent upon approval of the Board of Education and final state PCR. And authorizing Town Manager Jonathan Altshul or his successor to sign all necessary bid documents and contracts for this project.
Second. All right, it's a race, but I heard Dave first, so.
I'm on the committee.
Motion by, motion by Councilor Plod, seconded by Councilor Nagel. Uh, any just got further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thanks for hanging out, Lauren.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, moving on to item D, custodian two job description.
Yeah, so, um, first off, our, our longtime, uh, custodian in the building that, uh, Todd Britton, who you guys probably see, uh, every week. Uh, has announced he's retiring after forty years, so kudos to him, that's a well deserved, uh, uh, retirement. Um, uh, Todd is, is a, uh, his, his job title is a senior custodian. I'm sorry, I could have this in front of me right when I started speaking. Is a, a head custodian one, which is an LT twelve level. Uh, his, his job description doesn't really match his job duties, for one thing, he doesn't actually supervise anybody right now. As that, as that job description is supposed to. So we'd like to hire a replacement for, for him. But bring them in as a, a custodian two, which has, uh, job duties consistent with what, what Todd does. However, there's no, currently no custodian two at the LT six level. Um, that's specific to the town as opposed to the Board of Education. So, uh, we've, where we've teed up a draft job description that would cover what we'd like this person to do. Essentially with the same duties and responsibilities that, that Todd currently has, but at that, uh, at the, uh, at, at the rate that's commensurate with, with, with those, those, those responsibilities.
Any questions from councilors or comments?
Appreciate it, we're sad to see Todd go, but I'm happy, happy that he gets to, that he gets to go.
Big fixture here.
I know.
Literally in it.
Yeah.
Alrighty, uh, moving on to item E, reallocation of Fire Department CIP funds. Um, can you update us on that too, Jonathan?
I mean, I'll, I'll just, uh, this is fairly straightforward, uh, the, um, the, the Fire Department at, at Station One had a radiant heat project, which is. Came in sixty two thousand dollars and changed lower than what was budgeted in the CIP. Uh, there's requests from Chief Trauma to basically reprogram that money or reallocate it. To, uh, repairing or replacing the, the, the bay floor in Station One, which has some warping. Um, or there's, there was some warping which presents a trip hazard. Uh, the chief was able to find a contractor, unfortunately not on state contract, that could do the project at approximately that cost. Um, so, um, trying to find somebody, I know the chief is trying to find somebody that, that, that is on state contract. Or, and/or we have to go to bid on it, but, um, hopefully that, that sixty two thousand dollars would do the trick. So council's okay with this, at the next meeting, we could formally reallocate that money.
Um, any questions from councilors on this?
Just a quick question.
Councilor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but is it likely that the project would fall within the sixty two K?
I mean, I, I, chief, you wanna make that one?
So we've had multiple lenders already come out and actually pulled the job out and it's in that price range.
Okay.
So we're pretty confident that it'll hit that number.
And, and that safety concern is, uh, a tripping hazard?
That's correct. So right now in the wintertime, the trip hazard isn't as large, but in the summertime, it actually expands more. It actually becomes more of a trip hazard. Right now it's, you know, it's not as bad, but in the summertime, it gets a lot worse. We have a lot of traffic going through there with the public and our concern is someone going in there and tripping on it. So what we're gonna basically do is remove the existing tile floor that we have down there now and then epoxy over the top of it. Um, and then it will have no tile on it, it will just be an epoxy finish.
Now roughly how, what large size of square?
Uh, that's about, uh, I think it's six thousand square feet, roughly.
Um, and my question is, when would you start?
Uh, as soon as I can get the funding available.
Okay, right away.
And then what we'll probably end up having to do if, uh, we can't find someone on state contract for a sole source provider. We'd have to go out there RFP and I'd try to get it done as quickly as possible. I'd like to get it done before the parade, because obviously we have people coming through there then.
Right.
That's our ultimate concern is that, so I'd like to get it done before that.
Do you have to wait for the weather?
Uh, so the contractor has come out, uh, said that the concrete has to be at sixty five degrees. As long as the concrete is at sixty five degrees, they can put the finish on it with no problems at all.
Excellent.
Obviously, we would have to move all the apparatus outside. That's our concern too, is the weather. Making sure that we actually have decent weather to leave the stuff outside. Um, but yeah, sixty five degrees, the concrete has to be to be able to put that down.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief, I think?
I think great, I'm glad, I will give it, take care of it for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right. Moving right along, actually I've written oral communications to our town manager. I see that we have our report here. I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, so that's the, the month, the January monthly report is on your desk. Uh, Ms. Lyons, there are hard copies here at the table and if they're not posted online, it, it will be tomorrow. A couple of upcoming, uh, events, uh, that should be on council's radar, but just put out there again. Um, I'll have the budget to you formally on Monday, uh, March third. Um, on Wednesday, at Wednesday, March fifth, at nine AM at, at the Spark at six ninety seater slash. One Myra Cohen, where there's, there could be the groundbreaking, uh, for that project, so that's gonna be exciting. Uh, on Saturday, uh, uh, March eighth at nine AM here in Town Council, we'll have the design charrette for the town, uh, master plan study. Um, and then finally on, uh, March, uh, Thursday, March thirteenth at eight AM at the Senior Disabled Center. We'll have the State of the Town event, my first, uh, ever, so I'm excited about that, so please come.
What date is that again?
Uh, March, uh, Thursday, March thirteenth.
Got you.
Could I just ask you a question?
Yes, as I say, any, any, any questions?
It's a minor thing, what, what is the date again for the national welding is, not the date, the time.
It's, uh.
Cause I've got something that said nine thirty and you just said nine.
I thought it was nine, but let me see what it says on my calendar, that would be the.
Whichever is fine with me, I just like.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Uh, it says nine, nine, yeah.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Any other questions for Jonathan? All right, then, moving right along, um. Council liaison and committee reports. Councilor Nagel, you're up.
Yes. The, um, senior center, uh, met on the twelfth, uh, commission met on the twelfth, they discussed their volunteer of the year. There's a senior center volunteer of the year at their, uh, banquet that they, they have every year, so they're doing plans for that. Uh, programs for this last month were fairly full and additional ones maybe. So look them up and sign up where you may not be able to, uh, get in to them. Uh, they had clue clinics as well, storytellers, uh, many other things. Um, there was a question about dialer ride and if a rider, if a driver is sick. The, um, board there was assured that, uh, there are backup drivers if needed. Al- also, um, there will be a fundraiser for the nutrition program at the library at the Portuguese Club. Uh, at the end of April, I believe it's April twenty sixth. Uh, and, but you can check, there should be things going out concerning that with all the details, price and whatever. Uh, nice venue and a good cause. Uh, April second, the, um, uh, Senior Disabled Center Commission is going to hold a. Special meeting for public input, it's in the afternoon. Uh, they've yet to, uh, to determine whether it's going to be at one or two. Uh, in the afternoon, the reason is that the many seniors are unable to come during the evening when they hold their regular meetings. And they do want to, uh, get input from, from the public. And, uh, about the nutrition program, what we've already been talking about and have heard from, uh, from Jamie, was discussed as well further. Um, there are more activities, uh, happening in February, including the AARP tax program. Uh, where, uh, seniors get help in terms of filling out tax returns, but indeed there are limited qualities. And there is a flyer that goes out every month, it's available in various different locations and, uh, in the senior center and elsewhere, I just have a. Copy of it, so it does exist. It is, it is extensive and it does include a lot more information that, uh, uh, people can find out about. So that, uh, you don't have to hear me list them. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Drago?
Um, yes, just from conservation and wetlands, um, the forty, um, Kits Lane, um. Development, they did withdraw the initial application and resubmitted a new one. Um, just in, for purpose of, um, to incorporate all the changes that came about over the rather extensive, um. Public, uh, session, public hearings, uh, that preceded this. So the new public hearing for the Kits Lane project will be on March eighteenth, if anybody's interested.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Plod?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a few things, um, uh, the few of us, Councilor Teniacos, uh, Councilor Betraico, myself, there may have been others, sir, good morning. I attended the, uh, Newington High School Career Academy Breakfast a couple of weeks ago, uh, which was fantastic. We got to hear from a lot of our students, um, yeah, from freshman year all the way up to senior year. Doing really remarkable things with their education and, uh, the projects that they were pursuing in the biomedical field and in aerospace and in engineering. Um, it made me feel really dumb and, uh, it was also a really great experience. They, they're doing really great work, so.
And the culinary.
And the culinary work as well that was happening.
No huge taste.
So that, there was, um, there was a, a lot to be proud of there, we should be proud of those students. Um, I also wanted to mention as well, um, that, uh, the, we did have a grand opening happen recently and. Uh, of note, this, uh, grand opening was for the Chair of our Economic Development Commission, who does great work. Karma's Closet is now opened on, on Garfield Street, a new great addition to our center of town, uh, area. So we wanna welcome them and I know many councilors were there supporting that. Um, and then I'll also just mention, uh, that as far as the permanent municipal building commission goes. Uh, the Councilon Nagle, Deputy Mayor Rada, myself will be meeting next week to continue discussing, uh, that. And, um, I anticipate that we will transmit a draft, uh, at that meeting next week. Um, and have something for council either at our next meeting, if, if, uh, leadership is amenable to that, if not, the meeting after that. Um, so that has been a long, arduous process, but a true bipartisan process, uh, and a really thoughtful one. So I'm very proud of that work and looking forward to transmitting that to council.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other updates? All right, seeing none. We are moving along to public participation again, in general, if you're in the room or over Zoom, would like to speak in public participation. Uh, please step with a microphone and state your name and address for the record, or use the raise hand function in Zoom. Uh, we will go back and forth between Zoom and in the room. Uh we will go back and forth between Zoom and in the room.
I'm gonna say, you can slip that guy on the phone first.
Oh, that's okay, you're here, you're here, you're right. You're up there, then we'll go.
Hi, Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. I live in one of the pink areas.
Pink houses.
Yeah, the uh the condo complex was built in nineteen seventy four. It has copper wire, copper uh coax cable throughout the facility and is fed with coax cable from the street. If there's any way that we could get fiber optics in there, that would be great. Mine, I have I have two concerns, two con- two concerns, one is it's nice that you bring fiber optic to my house, but I still got coax cable inside, so I I I they don't talk to, they talk to each other, but they don't facilitate the download and upload speeds or anything like that. The second thing is, we got an awful lot of cables on our telephone poles. I, somebody was saying three different companies, there there has to be at least six or seven different cables that are on all these telephone poles. Their power, they're 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 for power and for telephone, which is antiquated now too. But the thing is, if we're if we're going to be stringing more stuff, shouldn't we be consider taking some stuff down or maintaining to some degree? You know, I I know like there there's been instances where trucks have accidentally staggered the lines and pulled everything down because the ca- the cable guys come in and they just slap them up on the poles and they don't hang right. So that that's that, uh um I I I I live in a pink area. Um the um the whole library thing, I think, is a wonderful idea, it was a great presentation. Uh looked at it online before it came in. My concern is, when we sort of skirted around it, is the bonding issue. Uh I don't know if Janet can come in and talk to us a little bit more, educate, at least me, educate me a little bit more about bonding. From my understanding, the debt load for the town right now is about thirty six million dollars, and I don't know what the timeline is as far as repayment or anything like that. But here for the uh library, we're talking about forty million dollars. Can we, can we get a bond for forty years? That would be ideal, so we're only dealing with a million dollars a year. Um but I I I realize that it's gonna put a burden on the taxpayers, whatever, whatever happens. Um but I just want to take into consideration that there are gonna be increased taxes, and that's the bottom line. And good luck. Oh, budget budget season starts next week, huh?
Uh yes, next week, next week.
Next week.
Next week.
All right, to Monday.
Yeah, we have someone.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Don't deliver before I get my coffee.
Alrighty, on along to Zoom, Mr. Nowacki, thank you so much for your patience, you are up.
Um, thank you very much, um good evening. Uh my name is Daniel Nowacki, as I said, uh when I was talking about the library. I live here on ninety five um Barn Hill, and I ah I've been fighting for for a good internet in town um for a very long time. I moved to town in uh in ninety nine, and I lived in four different places, all in town. I moved on this side of Berlin Turnpike about uh a little more than twenty years ago, first it was a condominium, now it's a house. And there is just no way to force those big players to to uh give us a good internet, so. Um just like the our mayor mentioned, I I am willing to talk to anybody who is willing to listen. Uh most recently, it's been Scott, uh uh it's been Representative Turco, and it's been Cox Communications, uh I spoke with uh Go Net Speed and everybody else, and there is just no willingness in with anybody to come to the neighborhoods that are shaded in pink and just start laying uh fiber. Um everybody mentions um cost, and it's between a hundred and, let's say, three hundred uh dollars per linear foot, and I understand it's expensive, but it's not an investment that uh goes away, it will lay in that ground for decades, if not a century. And it it is the best way that we can have. Um it's future-proofing, you can literally no matter how how fast you want it to go, it's just a matter of a very incremental investment, and and it goes as fast as you want. I strongly support both projects that um Scott presented, the public broadband expansion, I know there was a lot of technicalities in there. I spent my life, I spent my career in IT, and I understand every single single one of them, and I understand why it's so hard to explain uh those to you guys. But this is just the way that we should do it in the twenty first century. Um he knows what he's talking about, he has my full support. Um and I am, I'm sorry, I I I wanted to attend in person, but I I'm still a little bit sick, so I couldn't do it. Um there are many things that the public, uh the uh dark fiber for the town infrastructure would allow us, it would allow us let's, other things that I can think of is emergency call boxes, the blue lights, that increases the safety and security in our town. It it, we can implement smart traffic lights, um depending on traffic and depending on the direction of traffic. We can uh we can, we can direct those. Um wifi-enabled traffic sta- uh uh transit stops, something that, you you know, allows people to spend their time uh with a wifi device in hand while waiting for the buses. Or energy grid monitoring, or sewage monitoring, or stormwater monitoring. Once you have that um infrastructure, um what the the dark fiber is, the 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 possibilities are limitless, and and we call it a smart town, we call it a smart city, and this is where we going with it, where town towns like ours should be um should be moving to. And then on public broadband expansion, I know my time is running out. Um my, I am only guilty of one thing. I I'm guilty that I live in the pink area and everything, all the um utilities here are underground. Um and there are easements, and nobody wants to come and dig, and I've been fighting for for that for for a very long time, so. I, the on, there is only one more thing that I want to ask you for, is I want to fully support those initiatives, and even if you don't understand, I am willing to present, I am willing to educate, I am willing to just tell everybody why this is so important for businesses and residents of Newington. One more thing, I I would propose or consider forming a committee to bring together town IT leadership and members of the public. And so we can figure out what our town needs and how to do it. Thank you very much, councillors, um uh for adhering to 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 what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. Right along. All right, go right ahead, Ms. Lyons.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty six Elton Drive, I just wanted to give a shout out to Todd Britton for his many, many, many years of service to the town of Newington, um. I've had the pleasure of knowing him and talking to him after and before town council meetings, uh he held up one side of the building and the walls in the old building, and I held up the other, and we solved all the problems that had to be solved. In any case, I wish him a happy and healthy retirement, um. He outlasted some of his bosses who told him he wouldn't be there after the new town hall was built, so God bless you, Todd, for sticking it out, we needed you there. Um, Mr. Altshul, I want to thank you for mentioning the town manager's report being available once it's daylight savings time and it's not dark. When the meetings start, I will be up there to pick them up, I did look at the town website, and the last one that's posted is December of twenty twenty four, so I'm hoping that whoever is in charge of putting up the January one, it'll be up. And last but not least, what I've asked for in the past is updates on the Permanent Municipal Building Committee Ordinance Review Subcommittee. Um I'm glad to hear that they're coming to a point where they have a draft, the last minutes that I looked at um regarding the review of the ordinance, last sentence says, the commission agreed to send this to current draft language two, and it's just left blank. I found that the minutes of these meetings were very sketchy, and that's why I asked the questions I did at the town council meetings, usually when there's committees like this that I followed before, if there's any recommendations, it's in the the minutes that I could not find with this particular committee, and I understand it's been a long haul for them, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they have come up with, and I hope it's attached to the uh agenda when it is presented to the town council, and last but not least, how's the town website revamp coming? I know you're not gonna answer tonight, but I just thought next time around, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in the room over Zoom that would like to speak in uh public participation? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to remarks by councillors. Um actually, I'll start, I have a a couple of things. Um first, I want to thank, uh again, I want to thank you, Mr. Nowacki, for um for your advocacy on on this issue related to our fiber network, I think it's a an issue that clearly is is um one that people don't have a lot of understanding of, and I think but I but I think there's a tremendous benefit to the community by doing this, so I so I really appreciate you bringing this um and being so persistent with us on 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 ensuring this, so I think um we're moving in a good direction. Um and I want to especially thank um deputy mayor Rada for stepping in at the last meeting when I was ill, she's phenomenal, I just want to say thank you for uh holding on my seat, you're great, and I appreciate that.
Glad you're feeling better.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, that that's um, that's all I had on this tonight, um any other comments from councillors? Seeing none, we'll move on to informational items. Uh I only have one, um just because it was on the on record, it was it was still being talked about today, um on March thirteenth at eight AM at the senior center will be the State of the Town. Um myself, Dr. Brummett, uh town manager Altshul, and our state legislative delegation will be speaking. Um that's at eight AM at the senior center on March thirteenth, we have a meeting before that, we'll have some more, but I want to put it up. Any other information I have to come up with?
Just wanted, um quickly, this Saturday is the monthly community dinner at uh Congregation Church in town, it's free, uh there's a free will, you know, offering of donation if you would like. But um I know councillor Page and I have been going, and councillor um councillor Plord and councillor Page have also been been attending, and it's it's great, there's just a lot of um friendship camaraderie, every time I go, I meet somebody new that um I've I've never met before, and uh the food is good. Um just an opportunity for um members of the community to get together. They've, the church has offered that venue, and um if you don't have anything to do on Saturday evening.
What time is that, Deputy Mayor?
Uh I think it's fourth, fourth fifteen six.
And any other info items from councillors? Seeing none, we're up to item seventeen.
Adjournment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, no. Motion by councillor McGee, seconded by councillor Plord, any discussion on adjournment?
No.
No. Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstention? All right, we are adjourned ten twenty five PM, great meeting, everybody.
Thank you.